2025 regular business meeting. A stall rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a minute of housekeeping. Approval of the minutes for regular business meeting of July 30th, 2025.
Are these the amended ones? Do we know?
These are the amended ones.
Okay, yes. I'll make a motion to approve the regular business meeting minutes from July 30th, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Aaron.
Aye.
Aye for myself, Mike.
Aye.
Mel. Now, next on the agenda, we will start with the interviews for the position of interim superintendent candidates. We will be going through the questions, one through four, and then on each of us will take a question. Schedule for an hour, whatever it takes. And then at the end, we'll give the candidate a couple of minutes to do a summary of probably, and I think the question's in there, why you want to come to where. So with that, we will do the first candidate, which is Janelle Pearson Campbell. I'm usually bad with names, so you'll have to forgive me, but I think we're good. And so if you're ready, we're ready. You want to do the first question?
Sure. Hi, Janelle, I'm Aaron Swabey. Nice to meet you. First question is, how would you approach an interim superintendent position differently than a permanent superintendent position, if at all?
Okay, so my name is Janelle Pearson Campbell, and I have been an interim superintendent at North Hampton Public Schools, where I have experience with that. And so one of the things of how I approach it is really about, this year is about calming the seas, because I know when a permanent superintendent leaves and interim comes in, it's really about building those relationships, and at the same time, looking at what structures and process that you have throughout the district. And how I approach it is that I have, one thing about this campus is having meeting hours with people, so that they can come and meet me, but also to having a plan and place. Today is August the 7th, which means you have a week or two before school starts, so you really want to work with building principals to see, do they have all the positions are in place, that we're prepared for the beginning of school, and working with each building principal, each director, to see whether they need to be successful. And then after that, I also think about coming for September and welcoming students in when they come into August, so that they're ready for the beginning of the school year. So I approach it as coming in to bring the level of stress down, number two, to move forward, so we can talk about focusing on student's achievement, so they realize this is the most important year, that they excited at the end of the year, say, wow, we achieved. Working with the school committee, one of the things that I do is I create a transition plan, so that when the interim leaves and the permanent comes in, that there is an interactive Google list. So for example, when I left North Hampton, I left all the documents in place, so that the permanent superintendent could come and build relationships, so they don't have to worry about searching Google or Microsoft 365, it is all there. So that's how I prepare for an interim superintendacy.
Thank you.
If we want to do follow-up questions, we can on each question.
I'm all set on that one.
Okay, good. Two, it is well-known that teacher-parent substitute shortages have become more common in schools across the country, are struggling to put qualified people in front of students. Our school district is no exception. In fact, our high school has become notorious for warehousing several classrooms worth of students in the library for full instructional periods, because there's only one to teach them in their classrooms. There was no one to teach them in their classrooms. Do you have the skill or creativity to try and get these students back into a productive classroom and not just babysit? Explain how you'd address staffing shortages of this nature in the past.
So number one, the best advertisers are our teachers to say, come to where public schools to come to support our classroom. The other step is explaining to the community that if you have a college degree, there are avenues for you to become a classroom teacher. So one of the things that I have done in my experience is working along with community colleges and colleges to support the parent-to-classroom pathway, or for people who are currently not in school, who have finished their college degree, talking about public service loan forgiveness. So if you have a member in your family that just finished school, who's looking for a job, this is an opportunity to come into the school. I started as a substitute teacher, and had the opportunity who mentored me along this journey. So in my 24 years, what I have done with working with various people is show them how to navigate Department of Ed, so that they can receive their license, also to working with colleges, so they have pathways, because a lot of people do not know that there are ways to come into school, so that when you go onto your Human Resources webpage, it's avenue of how to receive your license, there's supports out there if you have student loans that helps you along that journey. And so that's a way from there. So I would ask all of our teachers, all our community members, to go on their Facebook page, their Instagram page, and say, come and join us. And these are the avenues that we have, and provide training. One of the things that I did in Old Rochester was do a new teacher orientation for the year, so that if it's your first year, providing training, how to survive your first year of teaching, providing mentorship along with teachers, also to working with the teachers who are currently in the building, to find out what makes you stay and where, and what makes you leave where. So really having those conversations, so that we can retain people on that journey. But I think we, as an educational field, we have to really talk to people in our community and say, there are some avenues to come in to work with teachers, and there are perks, and a lot of people don't talk about them, about mortgages for teachers, the public service loan forgiveness program, how to pass the exam and that process. But we also have to be able to look on that manner. So those are things that I have done in my 24 years to recruit people into the field of education.
Mike?
All right, so what assessment protocols have you used in the past to evaluate administrators' performance and achievement results? How will you hold administrators accountable during your tenure here?
So number one, use, Department of Ed has all the data from the research MCAS analysis, but also A-NEC, so that it shows you how the assessment piece. But one of the things I also do is do what you call a training before we look at that, to see how the principals have used the teacher evaluation system, so that we can look at videos to see, how are we examining all of our teachers from there? The other part of it too, is to really understand the resources that are there. So for example, if you have English language learners, do you have the ELL guide that's in front of you? If you're special ed, have the special education resources in there? Have you taken the inclusive practice guide? So one of the things I always say, you teach, then you expect, because when you teach first, then you're able to work along with your building principals to see what they need. I am a teacher first, and happened to become a superintendent. So 24 years ago, I did not say I want to be a superintendent, I just was able to have mentorship. So one of the things I've learned in my 24 years is that when you provide training to building principals and training to teachers, so that we all look at the same document that we all move forward. There's another guide that I also use with principals, it's called Accelerated Roadmap. There's one for teachers, and there's one for building administrators, so that we all look at the same document, so that we all move forward. One thing online, I always look at is, do you have a strategic plan from a district level, a strategic plan from the building principal? So if this year, if you don't have it this year, that's why we focus on the Accelerated Roadmap until you receive a permanent superintendent, because when they have a permanent superintendent, then they get groups together, teachers together, community members together, to look at what does the strategy look like for the next five or 10 years. But for this year, it's really focusing on ensuring they have a sense of belonging, we also sure that we have data in place for standards, we also have the celebration, and we acknowledge. And so we do that every month from there, so teachers do not get overwhelmed. So what I would like to tell the teachers is that we do one month at a time, so that at the end of the year, we can show, this is what you have accomplished over time, and working with building principals.
I have a quick follow-up question.
Okay.
So your answer to this question was great, but it was very clinical. So what about like emotional disconnects between teachers and administrators, and trying to make sure that the administrators are in a good position to lead, not just about data, but also like?
The social-emotional part? Yes. So I am a teacher first, so that's when I began my answer to choose myself to you, is that I like to have office hours, and each building have like a private meeting, so that teachers can come in and talk about what their experiences are for this year, and then work with building principals to say, this is what I've heard, how to create a plan to move forward. Because sometimes, I'm a neutral person, I don't know anybody. So when you're a neutral person, people come in, when you have a closed door, people will be able to come in and share their thoughts. I can tell you from North Hampton, my first two months, because really I haven't, I used to have tissues in my office, because people, all of a sudden, I was a neutral person, and they started crying. The reason why they started crying, because they went through the pandemic, this is the process now, there was change. So once I had that, then I was able to work with building principals to say, this is what we need in order to move forward. So what's very important to me is having listening hours before I jump in and working with the building principal, because I have to listen first. I can't come into a district and start shooting off, you do this, you do this, you do that. What I have learned in my 24 years is that you have to listen first, you have to give teachers opportunity to come into, onto their school grounds, we have elementary, middle, and high schools, and say, these are my office hours, this is where I'll be here throughout the day, come throughout the day, I have my laptop, I'm here to listen. Because that's when you can build with relationships, because what I have discovered, what I have learned is, things could have happened 21 years ago that have not been rectified to right now. So that's what I have learned in my 24 years, and that my skillset is that you listen first, and then you move forward. And that's why I build a part, each month, we focus on one thing. So right now, it's opening up schools. And opening up schools means opening up opportunities for teachers to come in, to have conversations with me, so that we can begin at the beginning of the year. The second part is that we do look at data, but the third part of it is, we bring those together with the building principal, the classroom teacher. But you have to set times for principals, for classroom teachers, to decompress and have a conversation. I'm neutral. I don't know what happened 21 years ago, I don't know what happened last year. All I know is, I'm coming here to listen in order to move forward. And I can tell you from my experience as an interim in North Hampton, they can tell you that I had to listen, but I also had to say, we have to move forward. And the way that you move forward, yes, I heard about what happened last year, but I also want to know, you have kids in front of you, who are only going to go through grade seven one time, and that in order to move them forward, we need to have adults that are responsible, who respect each other, to move forward, and that's what I, that's what I, I am clinical. But I also know, being part of clinical, you have to listen to your people in order to move forward.
Thank you. All right, I'm next, here we go. Our special education services have been called into question quite a bit. We have had an audit recently, and we have important reviews coming up from the state. What do you bring to the table to help us make sure we are providing the correct services to the correct students on day one of the school year, but also prepare for these reviews?
My background, I started as a special education teacher, I taught for nine years, and I was Assistant Director of Special Education at North Hampton Public Schools. And we did do a program review, so I did look at the report from the program review from the Department of Ed, they gave you like prescriptions, what they are looking for. So my first step is work with the Director of Student Services, to see how you're planning for this year, which means looking at students' IEPs, looking at what the service delivery is, looking at, do we have enough parent professionals, classroom special education teachers, to begin from that. And then the second part is looking at the structures for special education, because it's also a legal document. So I worked with the Director of Student Services to see, what structure do we have in place? So for example, if a student is in a child study team, what does your documents look like for that? Also, what is your process with keeping data? Because one of the things that's talked about was ensuring that your folders are ordered. So one of the things I would say is, looking at it from a standpoint of, like, what structure do you have in place? So for example, one of the things that I have created in my Assistant Director of Special Education, it was a form. It says, okay, when did a student receive their reavow, when did you do 45-day, when did you do 30-day, document that against the computer, has it been documented? And inside for each folder, there is a checklist with the initial decided. So I'm coming in from a background of structure, of systems, and how do we move forward. One of the things that I also would work with the Directors of Student Services, do they have a team, so that the team can look at professional development, so that they work with all the special ed educators, to ensure they understand the process, ensure that it's documented, ensure that they have time to talk to the parents, respond for the parents, have leading times, do they understand the process? And also too, with parents and working with the parent side, do they understand the process of having an IEP, and what does it work like? So those are the structures. So those are the structures and pieces from there. And that's the clinical side of me, that will never go away, because I'm a special ed teacher at train, that I like documentation, because when you have new people coming in, you want to have that structure in place, so that they can come in and move along with you.
Thank you.
Aaron?
As you become more aware of how things have been going for our staff for last year or so, what message will you have for them in your initial meeting?
What message do I have for?
What will you have for them in your initial meetings with them?
One of the things I would say, welcome back, thank you for coming back through the door and joining us from here, and that I'm looking forward to meeting all of you, all of you in your classroom, to talk about what do you like about where, what do you go from there. But I also believe in sharing about my background, how did I come into a teacher, and why it's very important. The other part of it, I have a conversation about inclusive, ensuring that we ensure that all of our students feel supported throughout the year. And that the other part of it is too, is just working with building educators to say, make sure you take care of yourself too, because this is a journey in education, but it's also, you have to work along each other. And that you will see me throughout the year, going to football games, coming into your classroom, reading books, delivering activities, because it's a team part. Although I am an interim, I still believe being a part of the community, because being a superintendent is also being a part of the community throughout that. So you will see me with my sneakers on, I usually have my purse, my phone, but you will see me, but that's a way that, when I come in front of school committee, I can say, I visited so-and-so's class, this is what I observed, or based on the data that I have, this is the reason why that I provided for information for you. So I, as an interim, I always believe I'm still part of the fabric for this year, and I'm still part of the membership of it.
Thank you.
Culture is one of the most important aspects of any place of employment, but it's also one of the hardest to change, add that, that this community tends to be made up mostly of people that either will go through our schools, are going through our schools, or have gone through our schools. How would you approach school culture in the past? How have you approached school culture in the past, and how do you see yourself approaching it here and where?
One of the things about school culture is that they're watching the leader to see, how do you handle conflict, how do you handle emergencies? So one of the things that I can always say is that I'm cordial, I'm friendly, but I also believe that we have to move ahead. And one of the things that I did as a school leader was being a part of the community, going to Lions Club lunch. So every Tuesday, Tuesday or whatever Thursday had, I would sit and go to Lions Club and meet with the members of the community, having my french fries and my sandwich, but it's a good way to hear from the community what is going on, and I would set that in my schedule for that, because unless you're in the schools, you really do not know what goes on. The second part of it, I work with building principals to send a message to the community from their own newsletter, to say, these are the success of things that we are going, we be at the forefront of our own message, because sometimes, if you're not in the community, you might hear one message versus what's really going on. So I did see on your webpage, you do have a school messenger, and you have Clever and all that. So each school principal sent out a newsletter, these are the exciting things that are going on, and asked for permission for their pictures, so that parents could see a science lab, or a play, or things like that. But that's the way that you change the narrative, so that people understand that we are celebrating our staff, look at great things that are happening, please come join us.
Mike?
Nepotism can be a problem in many school systems. How have you addressed this issue in the past, and do you think you could address it here if needed the same way even as an interim?
I can, one thing, everybody's related in some way or another, and so one of the things that I have learned is, when I start listening to people, people start saying, oh, that's so-and-so's husband, oh, that's so-and-so's daughter. But one of the things I want to say to everyone is that our job is to teach students, this is a job. So once you come onto this ground, that's the expectation. So we look at our rubrics, we look at the culture, we look at the expectation. So I have had experience as an interim superintendent to work with the called conflict, things that happen between two individuals from the same household, that I really had to have conversations about, this is the expectation of coming into schools. I don't want to say too much, but that's what I have done from seeing that.
Good. All right, here we go. Even as interim, you will need to establish procedures and enforce policy. How do you see yourself addressing resistance to change in this short time?
One of the things that I do, from my experience of being an interim in short time, is have people read over the policy handbook first, and looking at the contract. Say, this is what you have decided for the unions to negotiate from that piece. And that if, and so I use that as a guide. The second part is have all building administrators, any directors who do any evaluations, have them read over the handbook and the union contract. A lot of times, what I have when I work with building principals, they call, we try to walk through the process before, if it's any discipline issue, or if anything that happens. We read through the contract together, and in that letter, or in that conversation, we're saying, based on the contract, this is the reason why I'm giving this experience. So for example, it was a professional development plan, and they were like, well, why are we going on a professional development? I said, well, based on your contract, you receive professional development 30 minutes a week, whatever it was, and this is what you decided upon on the contract issue last year, which is what we studied upon. And so when I responded back, it was based on the contract, because I'm respecting that. So then, it's not Janelle saying, I said, no, this is what you agreed upon, and this is how that will move forward. And it's also being fairness, because you don't, as an interim, you don't want to say, I make this decision for this person, and make decisions for the other person, without having that. So that's why it's very important that I instill to our building principals, my directors, to read through that contract, and say, this is what, this is the reason why from there. I've had to deal with court issues in my experiences as an interim, and from that, I had to look at, what does the contract say, so that when I made decisions, I'm like, no, it's based on what's in front of me.
Aaron?
What experience and qualifications do you have to complete the NEAS accreditation currently being done at the high school?
I haven't had an experience in that way, but I've had experience for special education, and I've also had experience with, from an interim superintendent, preparing for a NEAS to happen. So it didn't go through the process, but we were preparing for that. And one of the things we did, we looked at the qualifications for, the requirements for NEAS. We also had teams, members together to, for each section, for special ed, for general ed, athletics, so that each team had a chairperson, and so when the new superintendent came in, we had a document in place, so they knew exactly what has gone in the district. So that's pretty much, you are preparing for the NEAS, although you're not going to be there formally, but you're doing that preparation. So that's what I've done.
How would you make HR protocols transparent regarding qualified candidates, evaluation tools, discipline, and complaints?
I'm sorry, say it again?
How would you make HR protocols transparent regarding qualified candidates, evaluation tools, discipline, and complaints?
On your website, there's certain things that you can put out there, so that if someone who needs to refer to it, it's there, but certain things, professional protocols, hiring, it should be all there in that documentation. So when looking at your website, there'll be a Human Resources website with that information there. There's certain information that I might, I can provide for you, because it's confidentiality, but that's how I would do it. I always look at people's websites to see how clear, if someone who is not an educated background, how do they access it, so that's one of the things that I look at.
I got a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
So we've never had an HR department here, so do you have experience either in HR yourself, or working with an HR department in the past?
Yes, I have never been in the role of HR department, but in the roles that I've had, I had to be the HR person. So for example, for special education, it was my responsibility to go find special ed educators, or speech and language therapists for that, which means I had to work with contractors, looking at the union contracts, hiring perspective, calling references, documenting everything from that piece. At North Hampton, although we have the city side, you on the school side, you're responsible for looking at postings from School Springs, having that documentation, looking at who are we, who are we hiring, looking at the questions that we have to hire for, looking at educational background. So although I maybe have the title per se, and the roles that I've had, I've had to be the Human Resource, and also too, going on the community and say, we need a speech and language person, oh, great, here's my card, please give me a call, because this is what we need from here. So that's been my experience. But I like technology, I like to create websites, that's one of the things that I do, I'm technology savvy, and I like to research other school districts, to see how they lay out their human resource page, and then come back and show, this is something that we can use from there. So although I didn't have a title per se, but that has been my experience.
Thank you.
So our community is highly invested in our schools. Have you engaged with, how have you engaged with communities in the past? How will you introduce yourself to our community and maintain those connections? How will you make yourself available to our community? I knew you already touched on that, but could you kind of expand on it for us?
Okay. So one of the things for being an interim is really sitting on an email to community members to say, I will be visiting, each of you might have a different ward, so coming to your different ward to say, I'll be here, there to meet with you during that particular time. In addition to that, being at different schools, at their open houses, to sit at the table, so they can come in, and then they can see that I'm there. In addition to that, football, basketball, things that people love to come to, that's where, that they can meet me there with my wear t-shirt, and my wear jacket on, so that they know that I'm being a visible part of that communication. But I also too, I just went to the dollar store, and a lot of times, people start recognizing, like, I've seen you from, like, oh, yeah. So I'm very approachable in that place, that I'm being visible throughout, so that to me is very important, that people feel that they feel comfortable enough to come up to you and start talking, and that to me is very important.
Just so you know, we're on question 12 of 16, so just to know where we are.
Okay.
What skills and experience do you have developing budgets and prioritizing spending?
When I entered into North Hampton, I had five key new people, from the business manager, principals, et cetera. So the skill that I did was created a budget template and a protocol, so that each building principal, we started in October after September, because the reason why we say September, we received our MCAS analysis, the structural leadership plan, so that we were able to reveal that for the priorities. Having that protocol allowed each building principal to look at their staffing and their priorities throughout the year. So working with the business manager, by December, we knew exactly what the total amount of money that we needed to support the district. And then we also invited the union, by December, we knew the amount, so working with the union, so they could understand, these are the priorities, this is what the budget looks like from the beginning. In addition to that, working with grants and federal government in the various pieces, so we knew, it's called cherry sheet, so we knew what the money that we were receiving from the state. And if you look at my resume online, you can click on it, and you can see the sample budget that I put together. The reason why I do it online is that when it's time to give to the community members, that you can see how the priorities, how each building looks, what the priorities from there, and that you can click on the school, and you can see how it's produced. And the reason for that is that it's everybody- And the reason for that is that it's everybody's budget. And we know how we're investing and what, how do we do a forensic review from there. And then, for, when the permanent superintendent comes in, they, they will have a track history of how the budget was created so that they can look at a plan to move forward. And so, if you look at my budget online, you can click on it and you can see on your phone how the budget works, um, from there. So, um, by the time you get to the town side, the town side, um, since I send the PowerPoints and presentations throughout the budget process, when I get to the town side, the town side can tell you about the big picture. So, your big pictures are this, you want to retain quality staff, that's what I've seen. You also want to look at how to support special ed, English, Spanish, or general ed. Those are your priorities. So, you look at your priorities, that's, that's how your budget is created. The other part of it is by September comes in, you have your data from your MCAS analysis. You also know when the kids went off to college for your senior year, your AP exams and things like that, you know how to create that budget. And having a protocol in place allows each building to understand how the building is run, how we are funding, what are we looking for special ed services, for out-of-district services, so that piece is there. I invite building principals to come in and talk about their particular budget because they can be able to emphasize, "This is the reason why we're asking for certain things." So, in that PowerPoint presentation, it's really about, um, the priorities of the district. And I try to communicate that with a letter at the beginning of the year to say, "This is the timeline and this is the, the information for the budget, but it also provides, um, community members how the budget's being produced." So, that's been my experience.
Thank you.
I got a follow-up question.
Okay.
We don't have a, oh, a huge budget here, but, um, what size budgets did you typically have to manage?
Uh, Northampton was 38 million.
It's all my chicken scratch. I can read it.
We're good.
All right, uh, next question is, "How will you prioritize the various issues that need to be addressed here and where?"
Um, one of the things how I prioritize, um, I, number one, I take, when I take inventory from listening to people, I, um, begin to create a list. So, one of the first things I do, I do right now is opening up of schools, maybe prioritize right now, to ensure that you have building principals, classroom teachers in front of the students at that point in time. The second, do, do three things that we can see. The second part that you can see is ensuring that the buildings are ready, um, for students to come in. The third part of my prioritize is thinking about the education and academic process and that if there are any emergencies that are being, that needs to be put in place. I create a communication plan. So, my communication plan is working with school committee members, um, so they know each week. So, for example, if Department of Ed has, maybe have called and said, "You need to focus on your bullying plan," that'll be part of the school committee communication. The second priority is looking at if there are any emergency things like a bill, like a, you root for something being that happens that has to come to the school committee and say, "These are things that, from that piece." But one things that I do in my experience is I write a list and I break it apart by each month that needs to be done. And by the end of the year, I have a list completed with the documentation to provide to the school committee to show these are the things that I have accomplished with all of the team members. So, um, my brain, I write, I'm a teacher who has lists, but the list with, um, documents so that you see how that it just reforms. And I know you have Microsoft 365, but I also use Google where you can see the process being created online. So, I, I can invite the school committee members in so you can see the process being done. So, that's how my, that's how I'm still a teacher by training.
I like this question. Why are you applying for an interim superintendent position? What personal objectives or goals do you have as an interim in this short time?
I'm breaking the glass ceiling. In Massachusetts, there's maybe five or six block superintenances. And I know I can do it. I've been an interim superintendent in North Hampton Public Schools. Now, I do read the craziness and I feel that, because somebody said over here and said, "Why you want to come to this craziness?" And I said, "Why am I not?" Um, I bring some, I bring skills and I am technical because I was pharmacy major before I became medicated. So, my, I have that clinical brain. But you need somebody to care about the kids because right now, you've got to come back to the kids. It's not about the adults in the room. And I try to talk to adults, to listen to them, to say to them, "I hear you, I heard this happened 21 years ago, I hear you now, but we have to move forward." And you have to work with building principals, you have to work with classroom teachers, and you have to work with parents. And so, my skill set and my mentors have said to me, "I'm preparing you because you cannot just understand the boiler. You have to be prepared in your business, special ed, ELL, because you have to break the glass ceiling." So, I'm going to be honest. And I know you're looking for your interim, but I can tell you from Northampton, they would say, "I came, I conquered, and I made sure that it was kids first." And it was a way that you put kids first. And that's the most important thing, is you putting kids first. And my staff would tell you, "I love to laugh, I used to make cheese toast and mushrooms every day, they would laugh at me, but that was my, that's what my, my goal." And why not? Why not come and join you? And I always believe that this is, you know, the, the door has to, you have to be able to show what you can do. And you have to bring people in to say, "Focus on kids first because this is, this is the most important year." So, um, that's why.
Mike? What experience do you have working with unions? Can you share a time when you needed to compromise on a key issue?
So, in Northampton, they have several, um, unions, maybe five or six. And so, one of the things that I did do is we had a scheduled meeting time. So, each month, I met with each union, it could be administrative assistants, custodians, et cetera. And that we, we talked each month so that we could support each other and their members. The second part of it is if something happened where they had my phone number and we were caught, we would call each other and say, "This is what's going on in the community, we need to have a meeting time." And that's, that's also too, I worked with them. So, when you're in interim, although you have a negotiated contract, sometimes you have to, to add, add a denim because of what's going on. For example, my custodians, it was snow season time and they wanted to update the contract. So, we had to sit down together, hear from the custodians, hear from the union, hear from the school committee, and I did that. And so, although you contracted, you think it's signed, you're constantly working alongside so that you are, um, supporting the union along that journey. And that with unions, when it came down to the budget season, by December, when I knew the exact number, I invited the union president and the vice president so that they could hear before anybody else, because they have to support their members. So, we brought them in so they could hear about the total, what was going in, in the buildings, how would affect their, their membership so that there's a process.
All right, last one.
Woo!
Yeah.
That's right.
What is your approach, you've kind of touched on this already, we'll hit it again. What is your approach to stabilizing morale during leadership transitions?
Party with the purpose. And one of the things I like to do is each month, I'll work with the building principals to have some type of fun things to do, like Halloween comes in, costume day from there. Before, before the Christmas break, what type of celebration that you have. Teach appreciation, working with the PTO, um, so that, um, parents can come celebrate from there. Also too, not just teachers, but paraprofessionals, custodians, nurses, um, your, your executive assistants, so that everyone feels that they're supported from that piece. And that each month, one of the things that, that I can do, just simple things is knowing people's names. So, when you walk down the hallway and you can say, "Good morning, so-and-so," and people are like, "You remember my name." And I try to remember people's names so that when I see them in the hallway, I can recognize them. And I think that's the same thing about building principals and classroom teachers, say hello to each other because you don't know what someone's going to face when they walk in the door. And to me, I do this by example. I believe that I don't care if you're the custodian, if you're the executive assistant, you speak to everybody because that to me is very important because we have to be civil and kids have to see adults being civil.
Follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Another question on, uh, this was about special education. You mentioned that you were both a teacher and superintendent. So, you probably know that in the state of Massachusetts, there's kind of a lack of enforcement from, at the state level, uh, you know, regarding special education and compliance. So, as a teacher, um, you know, unless you have a, a strong, uh, system in place, there's, there's going to be some self-directed compliance. So, I'm curious, what is your experience as a, a teacher in self, uh, I mean, um, in special ed? And how, what was the protocols for ensuring that you were compliant? And then, as a superintendent, um, how did you administer that to ensure there was compliance?
Okay. So, um, in my role as assistant director of special education, further on to superintendent, it's, I'd made protocols from the beginning, middle, and end of the year. And it really talks about IEP compliance, it's like a checklist so that we can go behind them and to see, um, how, um, the teacher is, is documenting. And so, one of the things is also, it's printed. So, when a new person comes in, they can see the beginning of the year checklist, building checklist, and end of the year checklist. And that when you work with the building principal and the special ed classroom teacher, and you can see how that checklist is being documented. And, and also too, as a superintendent, you want to look at your professional development time to see when will special ed teachers have the opportunity to do their paperwork? Because in the world of special ed, you're not only doing special ed paperwork, you're also teaching general education. So, you know, like the, some of the questions you talked about previously about special ed at the beginning of the year, you have to figure out, what does the caseload looks like for the special ed provider? When will they have time to do the doc, the paperwork? That's also going to be important because they're not just only implementing IEP. They have to document, they might have to test. So, then you really have to look at it from that pa, that level. So, that's, that's a conversation that you have to have with your special ed director. So, you look at your caseload, you look at your service delivery, you also look at when they will have time, you also look at the PD time so that they have that. Because if the student is doing an alternative assessment, that's a, that's, that's also too added documentation that the teacher will have to have. And then, they might have to go to a professional development time so that, out of the district because that might have changed since then. So, um, I am, I always believe in protocols because those protocols will also help you if you ever get, if you ever get sued, you can look at the documentation to see when that documentation has been put in place. So, that is a new IEP that has come out maybe two to three years ago that talks about, um, general education, have the documentation. It also talks about, um, if a student, the student voice. So, that documentation has been put in place. So, the other questions I would also ask the directors of the services, "When has the district reviewed the, the new protocols for special ed IEP? When have you reviewed the inclusive practice?" God, it's not just only students, special education, it's general ed, it's English, language, arts, it's everybody. So, that's the piece. But one thing I can say is, we break it apart each month so that teachers do not get overwhelmed. So, right now, August is opening up schools to look at your caseloads. Then September, we look at service deliveries. We want to make sure that services are being documented. If anything has changed, um, if you, you don't have a paraprofessional, we have to document that. So, those thing, it moves along that journey. So, that's been my experience.
So, that, that's for, more from the administrative side. So, or say, uh, your experiences as a teacher, if you either had a structured environment, maybe you had a, a special ed, um, a director that was providing some type of, you know, process, but what, what is your experience on the teacher's side when you may have had a strong structure or maybe not so strong a structure? How did, how'd you make sure your caseload was compliant?
Well, that is, to me, it has to be both teacher and administrator. What I've explained to you, the, the checklist, that's from a teacher's side. Because when you hire a special education teacher, they understand that this is the protocols that are put into place. An administrator comes behind you to see, "Has it been done?" It's like a check-in of balance. And I think that's where we have to educate school committee members and public to understand what does a special education teacher does. Because when they receive that licensure, it says that they know how to look at ensuring IEP, service delivery, it's a check-in of balance. And that's where a lot of times, special ed teachers will be saying, "Look, we have to do that paperwork and we have to document." So, that's both. So, especially, in my experience as a special education teacher and as administrator, they both have that checklist together, they set meetings up together to review it together. Now, if we have new special ed teachers who are going to be, coming to where, public schools, that's where your mentorship comes in and that where's that, that strata, that structure comes into place so that they can review both of them together. Because that's how it works. And that's where your scheduling has to come into place. And that's where a lot of times, special ed teachers say, "I do not have enough time during my teacher time or the prep time for that." And that's where, that's where the conversation with school committee members saying, "How do we ensure that they have time to do the IEP, teach the IEP, and implement it?" So, that's both. So, you have to do both. And that might be a class, class course so that you understand the process.
Did the contract ever, did the union contract ever, uh, in your experience, did the union contract ever affect that anyway or is that a separate issue?
Well, when you come to, to negotiate, a lot of times, the special ed administrator comes in and talks about that and negotiate that. So, that's why they might say, "You look at the contract hours, when they get able to do it, look at your PD time for them to do it, the scheduling time." So, that is also a conversation with the union and the school committee because that's also resources.
Thank you.
I don't want to spend any money, but that's the reality.
I have a follow-up question.
Yes.
You mentioned professional development. I'm a teacher in Springfield. Professional development, we've all sat through the professional developments that do not apply to us whatsoever. And I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I'm hearing you say something more along the lines of like a differentiated professional development, giving those special ed teachers time to do their progress reports, do their, um, IEP documentation, so, you know, paperwork, all that good stuff, which is great. I guess, I guess my, I guess my overall question is, um, do you, do you feel that your experience in special education is going to make you uniquely qualified to make sure that our special education students and teachers have the resources they need to do a better job?
My experience is usually qualified to do this position because also as assistant superintendent and a superintendent, my responsibility was to do a professional development plan. And that professional development plan was learning new material, but also understanding that teachers also had to work on paperwork at the same time. So, that I looked at your scheduled day was half a day of PD. So, that day, you have to really schedule the time throughout the time so that when you learn something new and also to you working on any paperwork or any assessment tools during that time. So, I have, I've had experience of looking at and creating scheduled times so that it's a balanced effect. Yes, the district will have to offer professional development that you would be required to do, but also understand that there are times where, um, that's where paperwork or, or new initiatives can be done at the same time. I call it the wedding planner. So, one of the things I do in my experience, I ask music, special ed, "What professional development do you need during that time?" So, that it's a balanced effect. So, I've had experience with that.
Thank you. That's it.
We'll give you two or three minutes to summarize or tell us something that we need to know or, um, button up on something. It's yours.
This is my 24th year in special, in education. I started as a substitute teacher. And I believe that has also helped me to come into the superintendent because I remember being that first-year teacher in the various roles that I've had in order from that. My mentors have always said that you always need a team. And although I am an interim full year, I always believe that we are learning from each other. And that being a teacher, a train, I always believe in leaving structures and having people to provide feedback so that make their lives a lot, a little bit easier to negotiate. So, um, that's, that has been my skill set. So, I know, um, tonight is going to be your night, it's a, it's a fast-moving night, It's a, it's a fast-moving night, but I can say that I have been a successful interim superintendent, that one of the things that I can say is that if you could talk to North Hampton, um, that I always believe that you have to bring a team together and whatever structures that I put together is always going to outlast me. And it's really, that's always you trying to make it better for someone comes after you. And so as an interim, I always believe that I'm trying to make it better for the permanent superintendent coming in so that they can build relationships and not really work so at the first few months, so those things are easy to transition. So those are things that I have done in my 24 years. But thank you so much for the interview today. I know it's quick and moving and fast, but I am a clinical person and I'm also a special ed student. And my doctorate was on looking at, um, placement of minority kids into special education, um, without having processes. So my, my dissertation was looking at that. And so I'm, I'm a practitioner and I think as a profession, we have to think ourselves as professionals and that's what I have done. And, and really, um, that's what I've been done throughout my year time. And so I also want to say that there are public service grants for people who maybe think that they can't afford to come into teaching. And then I always, always try to tell people like, there's avenues to coming into teaching and it's probably been the best profession that I've had and it's still from over there. So I thank you so much for my interview. Have a good day.
No, we thank you.
Thank you.
Do we clap?
What we're doing tonight is we're doing offer interviews and then we will move into discussion after. And we're hoping to make a decision, but
Yes.
That's out there. And, um, we will, I believe in your application is a phone number. Is that a good number to reach him? Okay, then, uh, that's what we'll use.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, the next one is here, but we do have time.
You got seven minutes.
I'm going to run to the car and, uh,
That's what I'm going to do.
Yeah.
Get a water.
Gosh.
Let's see if Katie brought some extra, but not sure. Stan, we're going to take a couple minute break. Okay, I'm going to say we're back and, um, we are on our second candidate, Maureen Benanda.
Yes, good.
I'm learning. And, um, what we're going to do is ask questions, there'll maybe follow-ups. And in the end, uh, we can give you three, four minutes to summarize or tell us anything additionally you want us to know. And, um, so, uh, I think we're ready to go. Uh, do you want to start the first question, Erin?
Sure. Who do you want to mix up?
Yeah, but we may not be able to remember. At one point when someone did a follow-up, it's like, am I?
Go left to right, yeah.
We could go left to right.
I got a different question.
Oh, boy.
Yes, let's do left to right.
I'll start this time. Hi, I'm Mel. I'm a teacher in Springfield, um, new to the school committee here. I was selected in April, so here we go. Um, how would you approach an interim superintendent position differently than a permanent superintendent position, if at all?
Um, sure. So, uh, thank you for interviewing. Nice to meet all of you. So I did, uh, right, I did go online and, um, saw your school committee meeting and looked some of the questions and took notes. So I'm going to refer to the notes, um, on and off as I answer the questions. So first of all, an interim position requires you to quickly assess the district's strengths and challenges in a short period of time. Uh, to meet with staff, union, families, students and elected officials to set a one-year agenda and to prepare the district for the permanent superintendent. The interim superintendent works to complete strategic plan objectives, focus the work on student success, and if necessary, restore positive school climate and culture to the district. Uh, the interim superintendent establishes supportive relationship with students, staff and families at the same time as holding standards for teaching and learning high. Permanent superintendents are encouraged to take 90 days to compile information about the district, meet with community partners, staff, students, families, elected officials, and compose an action plan with goals to be completed over three years or for the term of the contract. So I am completing my ninth year as superintendent of schools, six as superintendent in Worcester Public Schools, one year as interim superintendent in Quaybog School District, and on June 30th, I just finished two years as interim superintendent in East Hampton Public Schools. Uh, so I just wanted to explain that usually, um, DESI does not allow you to stay more than one year when you're retired superintendent. Um, I was fortunate, um, because of the work that needed to continue with culture and climate, uh, to stay for an additional year. Um, throughout my years in public education, I just finished 49 years straight in public education. I've made tremendous positive outcomes in school climate and culture and student achievement.
Thank you.
It's well-known that teacher, parent and substitute shortages have become more common in schools across the country. They are struggling to put qualified people in front of our students. Our school district is of no obsec, exception. In fact, our high school has become notorious for warehousing several classrooms worth of students in a library for full instructional periods because there's no one to teach them in their classrooms. Do you have the skills or the creativity to try and get these students back into a productive classroom and not just babysat? Explain how you've addressed staffing shortages of this nature in the past.
Sure. So staffing shortages is, is not a new challenge. Uh, it has been going on for quite a long time. Uh, however, um, after COVID, it became much more difficult to get substitutes, uh, to cover classes. Uh, I was a special ed department head for two years, assistant principal for 12 years in the high school and principal for eight at South High Community School. And nine years as superintendent. It's always been a concern for class coverages. So I'll share with you the several methods that I used. One, I use paraprofessionals with degrees to cover teacher classes, being careful not to violate the IEP of special education students. I've made agreements with the unions, uh, for teachers or parents to receive extra pay to cover classes. Uh, we've increased the pay for daily substitute teachers. The district office has covered classes, even for example, um, giving advanced placement tests to students. Um, as superintendent, I, I also covered for principal absences. So if it wasn't a principal in the school, uh, for a day, I was always the person that went to the school and became the principal for the day. And I liked that because A, I got to know, uh, the staff better and B, I got to know the students. And, um, I love to get to know the students in a personal way. While in East Hampton, uh, last August, uh, a life skills class, which really requires a trained special educator, teacher left three days before the school year was to start. So myself and another staff member at the elementary school taught the class, um, from August till October until we could find a special education teacher. Uh, my first year in East Hampton, uh, they were under the director of, of the Department of Justice to have a diversity center and a diversity center director. And, uh, two weeks, uh, before school, um, began, that person resigned and went to another position. So I was the diversity center director from 10:30 to 12:30 daily from August to December. And again, I, I've got to know, uh, the students at that school very well. Uh, now they're going into their junior year and they've already invited me to their graduation and I, I will go to that. Uh, the other, uh, thing is that, you know, the librarian did cover classes. Uh, but what I want, uh, to say is that, um, we're required to be very careful about time on learning. Uh, the law is very specific that, um, students have to be, uh, it ought to count time on learning. Uh, they can't just be sitting in a library, um, doing what they want to do and not doing focused work. So, um, if there is a situation where we have to put students in the library, um, any covering classes, uh, should require that students complete the subject work.
I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm unfamiliar with how DESI or whoever it is measures time on learning. Can you?
So if, in the high school, you have to have 990 hours of learning a year. So that's how, um, you, you do your school calendar. You have, you, you have to figure out how many, you know, um, what is your contract, type, your contract with the union and then how do you have the 990 days? So that's a requirement, um, of, of all high schools, uh, in Massachusetts.
Okay. I just learned something new. Thank you.
Oh, it's me.
It's you.
Sorry.
It's you.
What assessment protocols have you used in the past to evaluate administrators' performance and achievements results? How will you hold administrators accountable in your tenure here?
Okay. So I've been evaluating teachers, parents, uh, school and district administrators for 29 years. I've used a variety of evaluation procedures. I prefer the current DESI evaluation system. Uh, it's organized, it has a clear timeline, it's understandable to those being evaluated. The process I use begins with data meetings with administrators on all available school data, a discussion on the strengths and the challenges, a development of goals with the administrator, a plan on how to complete the goals, observations of the administrator with a written oral feedback and a review of evidence provided by the administrator, then a formative or summative evaluation depending upon how many years that, uh, the administrator has been in the position. The evaluation process, um, includes always for me, uh, recommendations for improvement.
Erin.
Our special education services have been called into question quite a bit. We have had an audit and we have important reviews from the state coming up. What do you bring to the table to help us make sure we are providing the correct services to the correct students day one of the school, school year and to prepare for these reviews?
Okay, perfect. So I am a certified special education teacher and certified special administrator. I have been involved with special education reviews for over 20 years, um, both as principal. I was principal for eight years and as superintendent of schools. Uh, the current review that you have, uh, that's going to be happening is also happening at East Hampton at the same time. So, uh, we have already done the required work and sent them to DESI and we're ready for the review in the fall. And I'm assuming that yours is probably the, the fall also. So I'm familiar with the process, I'm familiar with all the documents. Um, I have also mentored, uh, special education teachers, department heads and most recently, both in Quaybog and in East Hampton, uh, both had brand new special ed directors. So I have massive experience in special ed, so I also mentored them. So I'm familiar with the process, the documents and the work that needs to be done upfront and then, uh, afterwards they give you a report and then the work that has to be done to meet the recommendations of DESI.
I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Just going back to the other question, we talked about, um, teacher, parent, substitute shortages and we had commented that, uh, you had to make sure that you didn't violate sped IEP. I was wondering if you could elaborate on this.
Sure. So, uh, when you have an IEP, it's very clearly stated, um, how much support the student needs in the IEP. So if there's a student that needs a, well, to say a one-on-one and you need, uh, to cover a class, you, you can't take that one-on-one because that is a documented right of that student in that IEP to have that one-on-one for their academic work. So there may be, um, other stu, other, uh, per se for inclusion and a, a parent will go with the student as a teacher and also the parent there. In that situation, sometimes, um, you're able to have the student work in groups with the teacher and you might be able to use the parent for part of that time. You just have to be very careful that you're not violating, um, any student's rights.
Thank you.
Mel.
Me, yes. Um, as you become more aware of how things have been going for our staff in the last year or so, what message will you have for them in your initial meeting with staff?
So I, I'm thinking that you're talking about like how to be, how, how to build rapport with staff here so that they would, you know, get to
Yeah, like a first impression.
So, so as an interim superintendent, it is very important that you build rapport and foster a positive school culture quickly and effectively, um, both to support students and staff during the transition and to leave a lasting positive impact. So, um, to build a rapport with the staff, um, I follow, I listen first and act second. So I ask open-ended questions to understand the, the needs, the strengths and their concerns. Communicate transparently and often, send regular district updates. And this is very important to me, uh, was as a teacher and as an administrator, superintendent, be visible at school and community events. Maintain open, honest communication with all stakeholders. Uh, another very important part is to elevate and celebrate. So to recognize and spotlight students, uh, staff, successful programs, um, launch some celebrations. For example, um, since I was a principal, um, I always send electronic email card on everyone's birthday. Uh, because I think it's important that, uh, we celebrate those things we share and one of those things we know is that everybody has a birthday. So I send an electronic card, um, to, uh, the staff. If there's some staff members that don't want it, then I, I obviously don't send that to them. And it just makes a difference, I think, for, for somebody to get to work and see, open up their email and see there's a card that just says, happy birthday, hope something nice happens to you today. So that's an example of like launching some type of recognition ritual. It's a very simple thing to do just, just to send that card. And then also to let staff know that we're going to celebrate, uh, small wins, try to reinforce a positive culture. Uh, the fourth thing is that besides present, um, approachable, um, I host regular site hours for, uh, staff or families or school community people to, to join me if they like. I, uh, engage directly with students in staff and informal settings and I try to build relationships with face-to-face interactions. I let staff know that I'm a collaborator, uh, so I believe in collaborate, don't control. So it's good to empower principals and site leaders. I like to promote distributed leadership. Uh, I have found, um, as both a principal and as a superintendent, that if we encourage like cross-school collaborations such as when I was a principal, my middle school was also on the same campus and, uh, we did cross-school collaborations, uh, so that we could build, uh, a positive culture from the middle school, uh, to the high school. And then, uh, one of my last years I was principal, I had seven feeder elementaries and we started including them in that too. And also I frame all decisions, all decisions through, uh, what's best for students lens because that's, that's why we're all here. I like to support the emotional climate, so, um, I think we acknowledge the recent transitions or challenges honestly, uh, provide space for feedback, healing and rebuild trust and also promote wellness initiatives for staff that is, that is still struggling. I create a clear roadmap, so share what the focus priorities are. For example, uh, priority of safety, priority of communication and our biggest priority, instruction. Uh, I track progress and I, uh, adjust, uh, progress based on the feedback. And then, uh, the last point is that I lead with humility and confidence. So I stay grounded, um, open and steady and, uh, especially in uncertain times. I'm transparent about what I'm learning and where input is needed. And, uh, this is really important. I express gratitude often, uh, to build morale and to model appreciation.
All right. So culture is one of the most important aspects of any place of employment, but it's also one of the hardest to change. To add to that, this community tends to be made up of people that have either gone through our schools, are going through our schools, or have gone through our schools in the past. So how have you approached school culture in the past and how do you see yourself approaching it here and where?
Okay, so it's somewhat connected to the question that I answered before that, but I'm just going to give you a little bit more detail. So you're absolutely right, uh, school culture is one of the most important, yet most difficult things to change. So that's So that's because it's deeply rooted in our habits, our relationships, and unspoken norms. As interim superintendent, my role is really to stabilize, to inspire, and plant seeds for long-term improvement. So this is how I would do that. First, define and model the desired culture. Let's clarify our core values, work with leadership teams, administrators, central office staff, to identify the values that we want to see. For example, is our value going to be respect? Is it going to be equity? Is it going to be collaboration? Is it going to be high expectations? Is it going to be all of those? And then model them daily. There's nothing worse than somebody saying, "These are our values," and then you don't model them yourself. So I always demonstrate professionalism and empathy in every interaction, and I use language that reinforces the shared purpose. For example, one team means all, right? So like we're one team here, it means that everybody has to get together our focus regardless of the hurt and the feelings that have happened and to identify that and recognize that, but our obligation is to the children of this community and how are we as a team going to move forward so that our students benefit from our work. So I also listen deeply to understand the current culture. When I was in East Hampton, that was surprising to them. My first address to the faculty there, I had been listening to their conversations while they were having their coffee, and I incorporated it into my speech. And their response to me even months later was, "That made a difference that I was listening deeply to what they were saying." And so that's an important, that's an important thing to do. I also look for unspoken norms, so I pay attention to what is celebrated, what has been tolerated, and what has been ignored in buildings. And then, again, knowing that there was a situation here, I acknowledge the past honestly. So I validate people's experiences, especially if there's been hardship to past leadership. Prioritize relationships, focus on trust-building. Strong culture does start with people feeling they are psychologically safe here, that they have been heard and they're respected. And for me, I encourage connection, so I like to support, again, staff wellness initiatives. I think student voice opportunities are important and also collaborative time to work together. I like to recognize people often, celebrate their achievements and contributions. I like to also celebrate staff who really didn't get the spotlight, but there's some amazing things they're doing and let's celebrate them. A very important part, as I know you have a relatively new high school principal, is that you have to invest in your principals, right? And if you have assistant principals. You, as a school committee and me as a superintendent, have to equip them with the tools to shape and reinforce positive climate at their schools. If a principal doesn't have the skills to reinforce that positive climate, it's going to be very difficult, right, for staff to feel they're appreciated and to have safety in learning in their schools. It's important that we continue to develop leadership consistency in staff, so I like to set clear expectations for respectful communication, for inclusion, especially inclusion of all students in activities, and support. And then, I like to facilitate peer learning, so how do we create opportunities for schools with strong cultures to mentor others? And also, align the policies and practices with the culture goals, and I know the school committee is responsible for the policy part of that. So my job and the job of the administrators, administrative team, is to ensure there's consistency because if there's not consistency, that can cause a problem. I also review hiring practices, so you want to make sure that we're recruiting and retaining staff who are going to contribute to this culture that you are continuing to build. And then to eliminate barriers, what are the barriers that are stopping the culture and erode in morale? So also, my goal is that I would present to school committee if I was the interim superintendent is that to create culture goals. So not only academic goals, but create culture goals, embed them in school improvement plans, and also put them as a priority in leadership goals. Use surveys and attendance, staff retention, student engagement data to measure are we making any progress, and then communicate, again, the wins to everybody. And the final part is that you have to be patient, so you have to stay the course with patience. Everybody has to understand that, especially for interim superintendent, you're here one year, a total culture change or substantial culture change, it's a process, right? So it doesn't shift in weeks, it's going to require me to build trust, have consistency, and have clear expectations. And then, a very important job of the interim superintendent is to lay the groundwork for the permanent superintendent to come here, so we would build systems and habits that would outlast my tenure and make this school district ready for their permanent superintendent. And I guess one of those questions that you might have is, well then, how do you deal disagreements, right? If you're trying to change a culture, how do you deal with disagreements? So my view of that is that disagreements and resistance to change are an edible in leadership. You know, in 49 years, I'd have to say that you see that you will have some disagreements, you'll have resistance to change because people, teachers and administrators, are deeply invested in this work and their students and their values. So I just approach it by listening to understand, not to win. So it's not about winning, it's listening to understand. The other part that I stay focused on the issue, not the emotion, because people can get very emotional, so stay focused on the issue, be transparent and honest, and look for a path forward where we can move together. So, and the biggest thing about that is, you know, you can expect that you're going to have some resistance, but don't fight it and try to understand the why behind the resistance.
Nepotism is a problem in many school systems. Have you addressed this issue in the past and do you think you could address it, if need be, here in the same way as an interim?
So that was an interesting question. I think as far as nepotism is, so the things that you can do about it is, A, enforce transparent hiring and promotional practices, right? B, I require, and the law requires, a disclosure of relationships. So, you know, if you are the principal and say your wife works in the school, there has to be a disclosure of the relationships. You can't do the scheduling, you can't do the evaluation, you know, you can't do the promotions, any of that. And the most important thing is to create a culture of accountability. So in Worcester, a very large school district, superintendent, 26,000 students, 5,000 staff. And in the smaller districts that I've been in, it's very common for, to have families of educators, right, families of police officers, families of nurses, families of fire officers. That doesn't mean that they can't work in the same district or the same school system because often there have been students that went to that school district, they hear their families talking about the jobs and they want to become teachers. So as far as nepotism goes, you just have to control how the relationships work. There are people that are already employed here, you have to follow the law, you've got to follow the ethics rule, who you can evaluate, who you can't disclose it, and then continue that culture of accountability.
Eric?
I think you answered some of this before, so maybe you can elaborate and I can maybe have a follow-up. Even as the interim, you will need to establish procedures and enforce policy. How do you see yourself addressing resistance to change in this short time?
So I want to give you a little more information on that. So first of all, resistance is normal. People resist change when they feel that there, it's uncertain, that they're being excluded, or they're overwhelmed. So I would try to find out the why behind the resistance. For example, is it fear? Is it fatigue? Is it lack of trust? One of the most important things to involve people early, right? So involve key stakeholders and design the change itself, not just implementing it. My experience is that when people have a voice, they're more likely to buy in. I'll communicate the why, so explain why the change is needed, how it benefits students and staff, and what supports aren't in place. I like to look at data, I'll use data. I have so many wonderful stories about how change made a difference from my 49 years in education, so share those stories and show examples that why we're doing this, what the impact can be. Start small and show the wins as you go along, that will help build momentum. I would provide support and follow-through. So you're asking for change to happen, no matter what kind of change. You have to ensure that there are training, that there are resources, and times built in for that change to occur. And the most important part is that during the implementation, I'm present, right? And hopefully, the implementation for some of this change takes place in one year, so I'm present not just at the launch, but for the process. The next thing would be to stay consistent but flexible, and that is, can be difficult. I have never backed away from necessary change just because it's uncomfortable. I do adjust my approach if it's not working based on feedback and results. So I just want to share my philosophy on that, and I have this on my wall, and it is disagreement is not disrespect and resistance is not refusal. Both invitations to me to listen better, to lead smarter, and to build trust.
I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
So you mentioned a lot of different tools and techniques that you would employ to help facilitate change. What are your thoughts, I think the question I was trying to understand in the short time, what are your thoughts on, you know, how realistic or what's actually possible in one year? How would you go about?
So, well, I think a lot is possible in one year. It, you know, really depends upon the exact situation. When I was in East Hampton, the reason that they had asked me to apply to go there was because they had a situation that got them a lot of negative letters, emails, threatening emails from people all over the world relating to a statement that had been made by the school committee. And within one year, working with staff, with central office, we were able to turn that around as a group. The second year that I was there was so that then we could get ready for them to do another search to pick the new superintendent. So that first year, we spent all that time on looking at how we can improve the culture and climate. Because the culture and climate had been great, then the incident happened and, you know, there were a lot of depressed, sad people, people that think maybe we should leave the district, and we were able to change that. People did not leave the district, people are, you know, happy again and working together and they have a new great superintendent from Springfield that they were perfectly ready for once the work had been done.
Thank you.
It's me.
It's you, yes.
What experience and qualifications do you have to help us complete the NEASC accreditation currently being done at our high school?
So I was a high school assistant principal, was that with the common head, assistant principal, 12 years, principal for eight. I was the coordinator of the NEASC evaluations three times for the high school I was at. That is a tremendous job, especially large high schools. There were over 1,400 students at the high school and the NEASC evaluation, being coordinator of that event is a tremendous job. So I liked it because I like organization, I like, you know, collaborating with people, and then I really wanted to make sure that the students that I taught had met the highest standards. When I became superintendent, we have nine high schools in Worcester, and every year there was one or two of the high schools going through a NEASC. So I know, I just actually printed the NEASC standards for accreditation, curious as to what the changes were because in March of '25, they actually changed some of the standards. So I was curious as to what standards they had changed, which is important, you have to know the standards. So they updated the principal effective practice standards, foundation element, and they standard on student learning. So I know all about NEASC, I know how to do the evaluations. Very different from before, they have in the last five years changed the process. They used to come for a whole week, now they only come for a few days. I did go on and look at the collaborative conference visit schedule, so they actually come only for two full days, and it's a very different process from what it used to be, but it's still your NEASC evaluation and obviously, it's very important that your schools are accredited so your students can go on to college.
I have a follow-up question that may or may not be related, so if it's not related, then we can strike it from the record or whatever. Helping students make up missing credits.
Okay.
Is that part of the NEASC accreditation? I don't know. So like, if you have several senior years who don't have enough credits to graduate, like what have been your strategies to try to get them there?
So every district I've been in has that, has that issue. There is a small number of students that don't have enough credits, and it's really handled differently in each district. When I was in Worcester, we would put them on an online program and they could make up the credit as long as the credit was, 60, from 60 to 64, so passing in Worcester was 65. So that, the course, final grade, you know, was within that, they could make up that course online. So, and then there was a teacher that was, you know, paid extra to monitor that. That's one way they could do it. The second way they could do it is summer school. So if they went to summer school, we ran summer schools in every district that I was in, students would be able to go and make up the course in summer school, so they would be able to. And our Worcester, because it's such a large district, we actually have a whole school that's for that. So kids go to the school and they make up all the credits they want and then they're able to graduate on time.
Okay, so just-
So there's a variety of ways of doing it. Mostly is that they're able to make up that class if they got within a certain grade, then they're able to go and make up that credit. Now, there's also, in Worcester and in East Hampton, you have a attendance policy too, so you could pass the class and have too many absences and you wouldn't get credit for that class unless you went to summer school and made that up.
Gotcha.
So there's a variety of ways, but the whole point is, we don't want kids, we don't want kids not to pass, but also, we don't want kids to pass not knowing the information they need. So you're kind of stuck in a spot. So the best way to do it is to have the student have to take the course over, either, we use Play-Doh, I don't know, I know Play-Doh in Worcester, and Genuity they used in East Hampton where the student was able to make that up. How does it affect NEASC? It will affect your dropout rate. So when NEASC looks at your data, and of course, when you get your dropout rate, it's always a year late, so because you don't have your dropout rate until a year after, right? So they will look at your dropout rate and obviously, the state looks at your dropout rate, and they also look at your chronic absenteeism rate because of those indicators of your school accountability.
Okay, thank you.
So how would you make your HR protocols transparent regarding qualified candidates, the evaluation tools that you use, discipline, and complaints, et cetera?
So basically, the first thing is to become familiar with your student handbook, right? To know what do you have in your student handbook. The second thing is to look what's in your policy handbook, you know, what are- You know, what have you clearly stated, how to deal with discipline in that? And then as far as the HR is, you know, you look at people's certifications. You also look at, as an HR person, I've had to be HR when I was in Quabog. And in East Hampton, HR was split before I got there between the school district and the city. So City Hall, you're in the same building. So they did some of it, and we did some of it. So it was a sharing of, you know, having the queries, having the fingerprints, having the principals actually do the interviews for teachers, and then recommending who they think should get hired. And then looking at what was, what's the policy of the district on, what the pay's going to be, you know, based on how many years they've been teaching, what are their degrees. So as far as HR goes, in Worcester, there's a huge department for HR because there's 5,000 employees. So my relationship with that was basically on if I was interested in somebody being hired, or I hired the principals. So a panel that would, a very diverse panel, including family, community members, students, teachers, and union members, sitting on a panel and developing the questions, and then scoring them and deciding, pretty much like what we're doing today, who would be the best candidate. So I look at what you already have, and I follow the documents that you have. And then as far as discipline, you know, we're also required to follow the state documents on that, which talks about, you know, alternate ways for suspension. However, it does give the principal the right to suspend for physical assault of a student, physical assault of a school employee, and the use of weapons or drugs.
A community is highly invested in our schools. How have you engaged with communities in the past? How would you introduce yourself to the community and maintain connections? How will you make yourself available to the community?
Perfect. So as the new interim superintendent, my, it's very important that I introduce myself to the community the right way, so that it sets the tone for the leadership here. So my introduction will reflect transparency. It will reflect humility, commitment, and a willingness to listen and to communicate and collaborate. I'll do an oral, I like to do a video, and also a written introduction. So I would start, give you an example, start with gratitude, in a statement similar to this. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to serve as your interim superintendent. I'm grateful for the opportunity to work alongside such a passionate and dedicated community. I'd share a brief background, my background. So I come to this community with 45, 49 years in education, experience as a teacher, administrator, and always an advocate for students. Throughout my career, my focus has remained clear. I think it's important to understand my focus is to create learning environments where every student can thrive. Like, I would acknowledge the moment. For example, I recognize this is a time of transition. Change can bring uncertainty, but it also brings opportunity. An opportunity to reflect, to reset, and refocus on what matters most, is our students. I'd state my core commitments in this interim role. I'll focus on listening deeply, leading transparently, and ensuring that every decision is rooted in integrity and student success. I would invite collaboration and dialogue, so, because I believe strong schools are built on strong relationships. I want to hear your voices, meaning families, staff, students, and community partners, because together, we can continue to build a district that represent, I share hopes and values. I would set the tone for moving forward. While my role may be temporary, my commitment is not. I will service district with the full weight of my experience, energy, and care.
What skills and experience do you have developing budgets and prioritizing spending?
So my budget in Worcester was $415 million. I felt like I was a CEO of a big company without the pay, but it was a huge budget. And of course, I have a finance manager and a whole team of people. When I was in Quabog, it was my first experience with a regional budget, and I found that fascinating, because in the city budget, the school committee votes the budget, and it gets approved. But in a regional budget, both the town of Westbrook Field and Warren each had to okay the budget. And then when I went to East Hampton, we were back with the, because of their former government, the city council okayed the budget, the school committee, and then it goes to the city council. So I've had a lot of experience with different ways of doing budget. So let me just tell you my view of that, about budget and why it's important. One of the biggest jobs of an interim superintendent and a permanent superintendent is budget, right? That's one of your biggest things. So I prioritize the school budget based on balancing student needs, fiscal responsibility, and strategic goals. And often, no matter how much funding you seem to have, it's just never enough, right? So it's all, everything's always based on limited resources. As a leader, especially in a role like superintendent, your budget decisions also really show your values and your directions for the district. So here is how I do it. I start with the district strategic goals. So I line budget priorities with the district's mission and strategic plan. For example, let's just say that the district is starting a new reading program, so it's literacy improvement. Then the goal would be to fund that decision, to buy new books for the elementary school, to figure out how to do that. The second part is to always put students first. We're all here because students are the center of our work. So you prioritize core instructional needs, equity and student well-being. So classroom instruction, what do teachers need, what materials, what about class sizes, support services, are there counselors, special education, L-support needed, academic interventions. We can provide all the materials and work that we have, but unless we can target interventions for those kids that have the gaps, we're not going to make that progress. And then what are we doing for social, emotional learning, and mental health support? And I always ask myself, will this investment directly improve student outcomes? Because that's what our school committee jobs are, and that's the job of the superintendent. So I analyze the data then, because data needs to drive decisions. So for example, what are your enrollment trends? What is your student achievement and growth? What's your attendance and behavioral data like? And your program effectiveness, you know, return on investment? So data really helps me distinguish between what's essential and what's just tradition. And that's, that's a really important point, and that can be a point that brings a lot of emotion to people in schools and families, the part about transition. So I believe that teachers and staff are our biggest asset. Without our teachers and staff, we're not going to get anywhere. And they're also our biggest cost center. So, you know, we view teachers' salaries and benefits, prioritize if there's some professional development that we need to do, that needs to be included in the budget. And I've had to make cuts. When I was in Worcester, before the Student Opportunity Act came in, I also had to make cuts as a principal, that one year, 13 staff members. And there's nothing worse than having to do that. So I really try to avoid cuts that cause harm to morale or keeping retention, because you want to retain your teachers, you want them to feel that they're needed. So I look, try to do the protect and invest in people, and then I'm engaged in the stakeholders. So you need to involve the principals, teachers, parents, community members, school committee. Give transparent presentation of the budget. And the reason that that's important is that, in my experience, people support what they help shape. If they don't have anything to do with it, they're not going to support it. And then the most important thing, after all that done, is that you have to distinguish between what you must have and what's nice to have. And so you create tiers. Tier one is what's required by law, special ed, for example, compliance state laws, safety, instructional needs. Tier two, high impact investments, such as junior technology updates, other new programs that you want to start. And then the last thing is low-impact items. And then the last thing is, you have to plan for sustainability. So we have to look and try to see, try to avoid, like, with the ESA funds, with our ESA funds, sometimes we put positions in those ESA funds because we didn't have any other way to fund them. And then what I did when I was in East Hampton is, before last year, my first year there for the second budget, I moved them out of ESA funds and put them back in chapter 70 so that we wouldn't lose those positions. So clearly, if you have, I haven't looked to see if you have, you know, title one, title two, three, or four. And, you know, we all know that the money got released, but when I was in East Hampton, one of the things we were looking at is if that money isn't released, what is the impact on this budget going to be, and how is that going to impact our service for kids?
I think you're next.
It's me again?
Yes.
How will you prioritize the various issues that need to be addressed here in Ware?
So I think that's a combination of everything we've already said, like, you know, the various issues appear to be a lot of just culture and climate right now. As far as academic, I know that the MCAS accountability has gone to superintendents. It's not out for public relief, so I couldn't look at your data. So if it was something academic, obviously, look at the data, work with the principals and the staff to see what standards we're not meeting, and then to look at how we're going to meet them. That's, that type of work is actually easier to do than climate and culture. So the climate and culture would be what I've already said before, be transparent, be present, listen to what has to happen, and then guide the staff so that our focus really has to be, moving forward, the first day of school, what do we need for our students here to be successful?
Thank you.
Why are you applying for an interim superintendent's position? What personal objectives or goals do you have as an interim in this short time?
So I have loved the interim position. It's a very different position than the permanent. So the interim position is so much of problem-solving, establish a relationship with staff. I love the position because being in Worcester for 46 years, that's all I really knew, right? So I retired, and then I got the call, would I go help in Quabog? And I loved Quabog. And then I got asked to go to East Hampton, and I loved East Hampton. So I have even gathered more respect for the profession because everywhere I've gone, same thing, hard-working teachers, hard-working professionals, great students that all want to be successful and just awaiting for us to give them supports or provide opportunities for them. Like, when I was in Worcester, I started the early college program there. There are now well over 700 kids going to early college for free. I started the innovative pathway program where students that did not get into the tech school could have career opportunities. So we bus all the students to Worcester Tech in the afternoon, and they get their credentials. So they're in a comprehensive high school, taking AP classes, being involved in early college, and now they're getting their credentials. So I find that in the interim job, the skills and the contacts that you have made and that you continue to make, it's a sense of fulfillment that you're able to go to a district and share what you already know and provide them resources, and at the same time, learn about, you know, the great things that are happening in that district. It's just a great job to be able to be an interim superintendent and to be able to share and to become much more richer yourself, because every district is a little different and has a lot of great things happening.
What experience do you have working with unions? Can you share a time when you needed to compromise on a key issue?
Oh, I have a lot of experience working with unions. And it always seems that when I, wherever place I get to, it's time to settle the contracts. I'm just lucky that way. So when I first became superintendent in Worcester, I had nine contracts to settle, all right? We settled all of them. When I went to Quabog, we did have para and teacher contract to settle. We also settled that one. I got to East Hampton. We just settled that contract in October for paras, nurses, custodians, and teachers. So I have a lot of experience with that. An interesting fact is that I continued to pay my union dues to the union when I was in Worcester for 40 years. So even though I was a, in Worcester, the assistant principals are still in the union, but the principals aren't. I still decided I want to support my union, so I could no longer pay once I became a superintendent. But I paid for 40 years. So they gave me a plaque that said, lifetime member of the union. It didn't help with the negotiations, but I thought it was a good fact to bring up when we were doing negotiations, but it didn't help. However, I think that's very unique to have a superintendent that was a part of the union for 40 years. Never as a teacher or assistant principal or principal did I have to access it or file a grievance. However, you know, I have respect for unions, and I understand why they're there, and my job is to work with them and to do what's best for students, but their job is to do what's best for staff.
I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
Would you agree that in negotiation with unions, who, their priority is to support their staff and get what's best for the teachers? Would you agree that those two things are not mutually exclusive, that your interest in the students and their interest in the teachers are actually one and the same?
So I would say that their teachers, and teachers are always interested in students. They're just interested in the working conditions that they have, and of course, the salary. But I don't think that they ever take their eye off of, we're here for kids. There's not a teacher, I've never met a teacher that won't say, I'm there for kids. Where I think it's different is, all of us would give teachers more money if we had it, and we don't. And so it's how we have that conversation with them about that. We're not saying, sometimes it seems like we're saying we don't appreciate what you do, or we would pay you more, and that's not the situation. It's just that we only have a finite amount of money. So I don't think that I would ever say that they're separate, because every teacher carries what's best for kids in their heart, and many of them have students in the school system themselves, their kids come here. I think that the message has to be how we speak to each other and how we relay that message to unions. And when I was in East Hampton, I had a great, and actually, in Worcester too, in Quabog, but mostly in East Hampton, Worcester, I had a great relationship with the union. And I could call them and say, because it's not just all about money, it might be about a grievance, right, that needs to be settled. And I could call and say, hey, I have this situation, can you come up? And can we go see the teacher together? And we would go together and see the teacher and try to come up with an agreement that way. So I think sometimes unions get portrayed as these bad, bad group of people that the MTA is trying to control, that just cares about teachers and not about kids. But they're all teachers that are in the union, so they do care about kids.
Thank you.
Last question.
I think you may have addressed this previously, but feel free to add more if you'd like. What is your approach to stabilizing morale during leadership transitions?
Oh, I think I answered that, like, what would be the leadership transition? And I think I did address that. Do you have any more questions about that more that you want me to say?
Maybe you can transition to that.
All right, I already made notes. All right, I already made notes about that, so I'm all set with that.
Okay. Okay, no more questions? We've got two, three minutes, or more? And is there anything you want to tell us, extra or in addition?
Yes, I really am looking forward to the possibility of being the interim superintendent here. I know a few of your people, when I was superintendent in Quayborg, I found out about your baseball team, and I was the one that made the arrangements for the Pollo Park game to happen because I have contacts with a Pollo Park. So Weyer and Quayborg played at Pollo Park baseball, I want to say it was two years ago, right? So I think it's a great district. I think that the skills that I have are a good match for all of you. Experienced superintendent, if I did get the position, that would be my 50th year in public school education. I come with a lot of experiences, I have a lot of resources, I had a lot of respect for teachers, and as far as school committee goes, I'm also on the Worcester School Committee. So I also understand school committee and the role of the school committee. That's it for me.
Anything else?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back. Candidate number three, we have Mark Prince, and we've got 16 questions to ask, and we will start with those. Who wants to do first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Prince. Thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you. Just Mark, please.
Uh, Mark, will do, sir. How would you approach an interim superintendent's position differently than a permanent superintendent's position, if at all?
So should I talk into this?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yep.
Let's see if the camera can hear you.
So there's a camera?
Yes, we are live.
Okay.
Only in the town of Ware.
All right, all right.
It will be on.
I would have had my camera haircut, but that's okay. So I guess I'll start with, to answer your question, by telling you who I am as a leader?
Okay.
And start there and go from there. So I have a set of core values that I use to help guide me, and my values are simple, and they align with my beliefs, and they help support my overall philosophy, educational philosophy. And they're simple. I have high expectations of myself and people around me. I value collaboration with internal folks and external folks. I value open, honest communication, and I have respect for human differences. My values, as I said, are in line with my beliefs, and my beliefs are simple, that race and class are poor indicators to use to determine academic success. They all support my overall philosophy of education, which is work hard, get smart, and go to college and change the world. So to directly answer your question, that's how I would approach the interim position, but I would add to that some really critical pieces. And if you allow me to indulge me just for a moment. One thing I would say to you is that I would not seek the permanent position. That I view this as a transitional leadership role. Based on the research that I've done on the district and on the community, based on the elephant that's in the room that we don't see, it may be to the benefit of the community and the organization to have a transitional leader. And while in that role, I believe that there'd be a couple of things that would need to be accomplished. One thing is helping to facilitate the process of identifying a new leader, a permanent leader. And that process could be, you know, focus groups with teachers and students and community members and school committee members and things like that, making sure there's a leadership perspective that you create based on those experiences. That process could be making sure that you do an all-funds financial analysis so you know the situation, the state of the financials of the district, making sure that there's some sort of curriculum process where you understand where you are with curriculum, with instruction, with interventions. All those would have an impact on your overall budget, so that's why you want to do an all-funds financial analysis. Making sure that you have a plan and to base the results of your special ed audit that just got completed a few months ago, and so on and so forth. Positioning all those things in place and making sure that you involve all your stakeholders puts you in a place where you're then handing over the reins to an incoming leader where he or she has information, where the community has been an active participant in identifying the qualities that they're looking for, but also identifying the leverage opportunities that are available. That sort of thing. That's how I view it. Last thing I would add to it is, why is that beneficial for an interim, and how does it help someone who comes in for a permanent? Because those things are already done, then whoever becomes your next permanent leader can spend quality time at the beginning building relationships. Because that's a huge, again, based on my research, and we can have conversations about this as we go through this, but I think that needs to be mended, relationships with the committee, with the community, with the association, all that needs to happen. And if you could set that person up to be successful by having at least those things off his or her plate where he or she can focus in on taking the proper steps with an appropriate entry plan to address building those relationships. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. We go on this one?
Yes. I already circled mine, so we can change it.
It is well-known that teacher, para, and substitute shortages have become more common, and schools across the country are struggling to put qualified people in front of students. Our school district is no exception. In fact, our high school has been notorious for warehousing several classrooms worth of students in the library for full instructional periods because there is no one to teach them in their classrooms. Do you have the skill or creativity to try and get students back into productive classrooms and not just babysit? Explain how you would have addressed staff shortages of this nature in the past.
So my last check this morning, I think you had, as of July, there was five or six teacher openings. I believe there may be more. I didn't count the ones from March and June because I just assumed those were filled or close to being filled. Then I understand that someone from the teacher corps was appointed as an assistant principal, so there's another opening. So the first question I would ask is, A, how are you using SchoolSpring to your advantage? Right? And what I mean by that is that are you posting your positions, your open positions, in such a way where you recycle them to your benefit? So SchoolSpring works as a compressing thing, like you post, and then someone else posts, and then yours goes down, and it gets compressed and compressed and compressed. And we all know if it's not on the first or second page, when you're doing a Google search, that's it, it's gone. People aren't reading it, people aren't seeing it. The same sort of thing with SchoolSpring as your recruitment tool. So one way around that is having concise kind of posting dates. So if you have to post it for X amount of time, you post it for X amount of time, then you look to fill the position, and if it's not filled, then you repost it, right? So that's one strategy. Clearly, there's no silver bullet because once COVID happened, there weren't people to do certain positions and certain roles. You can come up with some creative scheduling, you could offer some stipends for teachers who have free periods, who may want to take on an additional period or something like that. You can start building your own, in all honesty, which is probably your best mechanism. Start bringing in student teachers and practicum teachers and having them work within your school, and then start using that as a recruitment mechanism. Maybe start a pipeline if you know if you're a pair of professionals who might be interested, who may want to step into a long-term teaching role, starting a pipeline to get them certified. There's no one thing. It's got to be 50 different things. And then your last resort is putting them in the library, but, you know, you also may want to look at your schedules and be like, "Okay, are the mass core courses covered?" Because that's the main thing. You want to move kids towards the requirements for graduation. So if those are covered, you don't want to penalize and harm a student because if they like jazz band or something like that, you want that to be available. So, you know, long story short is, I wish I had an answer. And if you guys got one, share it with me. But I think you have to do several things, and I think many of those things I mentioned are a place to start, and then go from there. It's really, you know what's really interesting about the staffing shortage? It's not just Massachusetts, it's the whole country. And we're all fighting for the same, I don't want to say crumbs because people aren't crumbs, but you get my point, we're all fighting for the same people, right? Especially if it's a special ed teacher or if it's an ESL teacher. We're not making enough, we're not making enough at our university level just to support Massachusetts. And so if you're coming out of Framingham State or you're coming out of someplace and you've got a choice as a special ed teacher, you've got Wellesley, you've got Weston, you've got Brockton, you've got Ware, you have a choice. And people are selecting, and people are poaching, and people are doing all sorts of dastardly things to fill their roles. So, you know, that probably doesn't help you at all. It probably makes you want to curl up in the fetal position and cry, but that's the reality of what we're dealing with.
What assessment protocols have you used in the past to evaluate administrators' performance and achievement results? How will you hold administrators' account?
Just a little louder? Is that Aaron?
Yeah.
Could you, just a little louder, please?
Sure, sure. What assessment protocols have you used in the past to evaluate administrators' performance and achievement results? And how will you hold administrators accountable in your tenure here?
What's written in their contracts? That would be the first thing to look at. And then if there's nothing out of the ordinary, my guess would be that you're following the DESI evaluation model, so you would follow that. Clearly making sure that their goals are aligned to the school improvement plan, and the school improvement plan is aligned to the district goals or the district strategic plan. That would be your first step because you wouldn't want to evaluate a principal on, you know, science if your school improvement plan is reading, right? So his or her plan should be aligned with that, so that would be the first thing. And then after the goals are written, the professional goals and achievement goals and those sort of things, you have a conversation with the person and identify the instruments that you'll use to measure that, right? So for example, if you're using the MCAS, the MCAS is given in the spring, but the results don't come out until the next year. So, you know, at that point, it's not really an evaluation that's helpful for the administration, right? So you want to identify what sort of measures you want to use. I think you want to make, I try to make, all very public about it, right? It's not a, I'm not a gotcha person. I'm out to get you better, not to get you. So, you know, I might have some unannounced observations, I will have some announced observations. I'll look at how you run meetings, how you facilitate meetings. We'll have conversations about data and how you use data, and if it's not an area of strength, then it's okay, we just coach them up, all right? Data's not for everybody. And a good example is this one, here's a good example. How many teachers do we have here? Quite a few? Okay, let me ask you a question, just quickly, raise your hands. All right? Hold on, let me ask the question first. Here's the question. Of all the teachers that are in here right now, how many of you took a class on how to use data to improve instruction for reading? Raise your hand. For math? All right, so you've got two people. How many teachers do you have? Right? So if data's not a strength, and in most cases it's not, we have to help people figure out how to use it, and so we coach them up. With administrators, it's, I look for the soft skills, which is also critically important, communication style, things like that, interaction with families in the community, written communication. Are you spending your time in your office on your computer or are you throughout the building? That sort of thing. So it all depends on the goals, it all depends on what you identify as measures, it all depends on what's written in the contract or what's agreed upon in the contract, and then you just put a clear process in place. I like the word accountability, but I think that we want to be mindful that with accountability also comes a part of the negotiated process, right? So you're not catching someone off guard, you're not using something against them that wasn't determined, you've had those conversations, the leader knows what is expected of him or her because you've been very clear about that, and then you begin the process of coaching them up and helping them be the best leader that they can be. It's not difficult, but it is time-consuming.
Our special education services have been calling the question quite a bit. We have had an audit, and we have some important reviews from the state coming up. What do you bring to the table to help us make sure that we are providing the correct services to the correct students on day one of this school year and also to prepare for these reviews?
So was the special ed audit that was just completed, was that an internal audit or was that an external audit?
It was an external audit through an education company.
Through DESI?
It was not through DESI.
It was not through DESI. So you have a DESI coming up?
We have state reviews coming up of all of our special ed folders and stuff like that.
Right, special ed, title one, ELL, those, they usually go together?
Yeah.
Is it a desktop review or are they physically coming to the district?
As far as I know, they're physically coming to the district, yeah, for a couple days.
I shouldn't be interviewing you guys, you guys should be interviewing me, but this will help me answer your question. What has been done with the results of the last audit?
With the results of the external audit that was done?
The one that was done this spring?
The former superintendent made some goals based on that, but obviously didn't have time to implement them.
Okay. And how much involvement was there from the teachers in establishing those goals and creating that next step plan?
None.
Well, that's where we begin, all right? So let's start by there, by taking what's been done, unpacking it, working with the administration and working with teachers to then create a plan and implement that plan, simultaneously be mindful of what's coming down the road, which is your DESI audit, and preparing the district for that as well. I think that the part of the question that's a little, not misleading, but, you know, shows the urgency of now, is you're like, on day one, we want something done. And the reality is that, well, something will be done, but not on day one, maybe day two. You've got to get your team together, you've got to sit them down, you've got to go through the reports and everything, you've got to put a process in place that involves everybody to then get to your goal. So through the audit that was done this spring, I'm sure there's two or three high-leverage goals in there that you want to address, so you probably want to start there. You have an active people personnel person, is that correct? Or a sped director?
Yes.
Okay, so working with him or her to identify? So working with him or her to identify some of those priority areas. You have team chairs, working with them to identify some of those priorities. You have service providers. You have special ed teachers, you have, and working with them. So once you get your team together, then coming up with a direction and a plan, that's kind of the kind of best way to do it because you can't change these things by fiat. As we've all seen that, right? You've kind of went through that the last couple of months. So let's not repeat the frustrations of the past. Let's come up with a new strategy that I believe will be much more successful. Respect and involvement, but...
Thank you.
So as you become more aware of how things have been going for our staff this last year or so, what message do you have for them in your initial meeting with them?
In the initial meeting?
In an initial meeting with them, yeah.
Wow, that's a good question. Who wrote that question?
I think that was you.
Good job. That's a good question. That's a good question. I think considering this position and this role is only an interim superintendent, but even if it was an interim, even if it was permanent, I think one of the things you want to start with is that, A, I respect you and I'm here to support you. One of the mechanisms you want to put in place is a communication mechanism. How are you going to communicate? Whether it's, personally, I like meeting. I always had a standing meeting with the union president or the union president and the vice president. It's usually two people and myself, and it was either weekly or bi-weekly. We always exchanged cell phone numbers and different things like that. It, you know, my phone is open, my door is open, lines of communication are open. So there's that side of it. But going back to your initial question about themes with the staff besides support and communication, clearly sending a message of respect, right? My wife's a first grade teacher, a good number of our friends are classroom teachers. I hear from them quite a bit on areas that I need improvement from a teacher perspective. And I value their friendship and I value their opinions. And so, you know, when I shared the situations going on here, that was one of the things. They said, you know, Mark, if you're going to do this, one of the things you really need to think about is making folks understand and that you do respect them, which you do, but helping them understand that. And it becomes more about than what you say, but what you do, right? Because you can say the right words, but are you doing the right things? And so the themes would be those high arching themes, but more importantly than the themes, you, you guys, and then you guys, you'd be judging me by my behaviors because my behaviors is what would be communicated, right? So am I setting up a process? Am I involving teachers? Am I, you know, am I leading by fiat or leading by facilitative leadership? Am I working with department heads and building principals and assistant principals and so on and so forth? All those things communicate much, much more than me just standing up and saying, I respect you, I value you, and I want to be here to support you and do it in partnership. Yes, I will say those things, but more importantly, I will do those things.
Culture is one of the most important aspects of any place of employment, but it's also one of the hardest to change. Add to that, this community tends to be made up mostly of people who either go through our schools, are going through our schools, or have gone through our schools. How would you approach school culture in the past? How have you approached school culture in the past? And how do you see yourself approaching it here and where?
So what little bit I can tell, and it's very, very limited, you have a culture here. How do I know? I see the articles that were on the wall in the conference room. I saw the resource officer with a snake or something around her neck. I saw Zeke, who's in charge of the day. There was a student who was really, really trying to convince the world that she had teeth. There were championship teams and coaches and staff and people laughing and clapping and smiling. And so I saw evidence that there's a culture. And those little pieces that I saw communicate a healthy culture. I've always said to people that a school's not a place, a school's a people. And as a superintendent, your impact on the district culture is based on the steps you take to build healthy relationships. The school culture, that gets built every day by your building leadership. So if you're treating your building leaders, your principals, your assistant principals, your deans and department heads and so forth, if you're treating them with a level of respect and dignity and you're modeling that and expecting that, then that's what they should be doing with teachers and with paraprofessionals and with so forth. I think a culture is what you celebrate. I think a culture is how you interact and how you treat each other. I think a culture is about your values. I think a culture is about how you go about communicating with folks. There are so many different little aspects to it. The main thing is, is that as a leader and as leaders throughout your district, they should be pulling on different leader levers to making sure you have a healthy culture. So what I would be doing is looking to see that those, the people in those leadership positions are doing those things, and I would be modeling those things for them, and we would be doing those things together. In the end, that's how you build, from a system perspective, a healthy systems culture. But as for, does the building, does a superintendent do the day-to-day stuff of your building? You do. With your, every one million interactions you have with a teacher, with a parent, with a community member, with a school committee member, that's how you build culture.
Nepotism is a problem in many schools. How have you addressed this issue in the past? And do you think you could address it, if needed here, in the same way even as an interim?
Do you have a policy? Does the school committee have a policy? So that would be the first thing. So in the past, how I've dealt with it is asking that question. Do we have a policy for it? Then let's get a policy. And so you get, you involve the school committee association, you involve the superintendent's association, you involve your legal team. You get different examples and things from around the state, and you come up with a policy and you come up with some procedures. That would be the first place to start. What I really want to know is what's underneath the question? And is it nepotism or is it employees need to be supervised with progressive discipline? So when we were overseas for five years and we're on military bases, I mean, you can recruit for certain level positions, but anything G7 and below, you use what's on the base, which are, you know, spouses of folks who are military connected. And so one could say that's nepotism, but it's not, that's the way it's structured. So you have to use the staff that's there. That's why I ask what's underneath the question. Because if it's, we're using the staff that's available or the people that's available, but we're not training those people the right way, then we need to do that. If we're using the staff and the people that's available, but we're not clear about our expectations, well, then let's fix that and be really clear about our expectations. If we're using the staff and the people that's available and there's misbehavior or unprofessional behavior or whatever you want to call it, then you have progressive discipline to go about resolving that issue. So to me, it seems like there needs to be two tracks. One track is, let's get a policy and let's get some procedures in place. That's one place. The other thing you want to do is get what's underneath this and making sure that we have an understanding of what really needs to be sussed out, if it needs to be sussed out. And then I would caution you one thing. Don't cut off your nose despite your face. Because if we're having difficulty attracting people to the community in positions, then the last thing you want to do is say to Johnny's aunt, who might be doing a great job but needs some training, you can't work for us anymore. Well, let's put the training in. Let's be really clear about what we expect. Let's make sure they're supported. And if we have to go down the other road, then with progressive discipline, then we do that as well. So that would be my advice to you. My advice to you is get a policy and then develop a procedure.
Thank you.
And also look at your hiring practices also, because sometimes how you write a position, job specs and things like that, could also allow you to make different decisions.
There's probably some cultural aspects built into this whole process too, but that's for another conversation.
That's another conversation. I understand.
All right. Even as interim, you will need to establish procedures and enforce policy. How do you see yourself addressing resistance to change in this short time?
Well, if you have, if you're, well, let's go back. Let's start with this basic concept. Whomever sits in this position, in order to be successful, he or she will have to build relationships with people. And those relationships that you build, the time that you take to build those relationships will help you be successful, but also help you lead the district and transition to the next leader, right? So it all starts with relationships. If you're pretty clear about your procedure and what folks are supposed to follow and you've communicated to people, then the question becomes, well, why is it not being followed? And so from a superintendent's perspective, that would be the question you might ask if it's an HR issue, your HR director. If it's a building issue, that might be a question you turn to the high school principal and say, hey, this was the policy, this was the procedure, why wasn't it followed? You need to fix that. And if he or she isn't doing what they're supposed to, then you need to have a conversation with them. So there's a process to this? There's a flow to it? Like if a teacher doesn't follow something, I don't just run down to the classroom. That's foolishness, right? That's not, no. It could have been a thousand things that it didn't happen. Maybe Peter died, maybe she was out sick for three days and she's just getting back to it, like, but that's managed by the building leader. And my role is to manage the building leader and everyone goes down through that. So it's a tiered kind of management system. And then if there's a policy, a school district policy, a school committee policy, that's being blatantly violated, the same sort of thing, there's a conversation with their immediate supervisor. And then if there's no resolution there, then there's a conversation with me and there's resolution at that point. And if, you know, again, you, it's a process. Most things in education is a process.
What experiences and qualifications do you have to assist us in completing the NEASC accreditation currently being done at the Ware Junior/Senior High School?
How far into it are you?
I think it's just about to begin this year, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. They've had the initial meetings.
They had the initial meetings. Your committees have been set up?
They'll be here in, I believe, January, February.
They're coming in January, February?
Yes.
Okay. You have their locations and everything and all that set up for them? You've set aside money in your budget to support all of that?
Yes.
Okay. And your subcommittees or high school committees have all been meeting?
Yes.
And you have put together your packets and your binders and things like that?
I believe they're working on it.
They're working on it? And you've been working with your facilitator from the NEASC?
Since last year, yeah.
Since last year? So what do you want me to do? You've done everything. You've got everything all set up. The next step in this is you have your dates when they're coming. You've made, you've set aside the budgeted money that needs to go to support it. Bring them in, have them go through their process, get the end report at the end before they leave. Come up with a plan if there are things that need to be addressed or corrected. Work with the administration before they arrive. I believe you said they're coming in January, so start working with the administration as soon as you can to make sure that all the touchstones are in place. Meet with the committee leaders or the committee members and make sure that they have, they're supported and they have what they need. And then have them come in and see what it is. I mean, you could do a mini one if you want, which is what I've done in the past, is, you know, if they're coming in in like January, going out in like the end of September, beginning of October, because you need folks to get a little bit of time to get into school, and then doing your own kind of mini walkthrough of the different aspects of the rubric and seeing what's in place and what's not in place and providing that feedback. So you could do something like that. If that was the case, then you, probably what I would do in order to facilitate that is talk to some local superintendents and get some volunteers from the various high schools from surrounding communities and have them come in and play a critical friend role and walk through a simulation for us and then give us feedback about what they see, what they observed and what they read and stuff like that, which you then can make tweaks between now and the time that they visit. Like, so we've done different things like that. But if you've done the legwork and the committees are in place, that's the main, the bulk of it. The critical friend aspect is not a strategy that a lot of people use, but the reason I like it is because it's just that. It's, A, it's good for other folks to come in and see what you do and how you do and give you feedback on it. Because after a while, you're like a fish swimming in water. You may not know you're in water, you're just swimming. So it's always good to have someone come in and play a critical friend role. There's that. And then if you help them out, they'll help, they'll help you out, right? Meaning you're surrounding, you're surrounding school districts and things like that. If they can play that role for you, when it comes their time for accreditation, you play that role for them, kind of deal. But yeah, that's how we've, that's how I've done it in the past and it's worked. I haven't lost anyone yet. Haven't lost a school yet.
I have a follow-up question.
Yes.
So just like a number, like how many times have you gone through this accreditation process as an administrator superintendent?
Twice.
Twice. Thank you.
Once in Northampton and once in South Kingstown.
Got it.
How would you make HR protocols transparent regarding qualified candidates, evaluation tools, discipline, complaints, et cetera?
Well, that's a lot. So if I understand the question, complaints, evaluations, discipline, and you said HR protocols?
Yes. How would you make HR protocols transparent regarding qualified candidates, evaluation tools, discipline, complaints, et cetera?
Why would you hire someone that's not qualified? That'd be the first question. So we wouldn't do that. That doesn't mean you wouldn't help people get certification or do whatever, do those things. That doesn't mean you wouldn't hire someone on an emergency certification. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean you don't do those things. But if the certification is the only thing they're lacking, then, you know, they're qualified. So let's just say we wouldn't hire anyone that's not qualified. As for some of the other things that you mentioned, you can't make it public, right? For example, if you're disciplining a teacher or you're disciplining an administrator or something like that, there are, you can't make that public, so we're not going to do that. You just have to rest assured that the administration is doing their job. You just have to rest assured that the administration is doing their job, and they would be, because I'd make sure that they're doing what they need to do and that I'd be doing the right thing. So, we can't share that. I guess my question to you is, like, what's the problem? Is the problem that you've been hiring people that are not qualified? Is the problem that people have been misbehaving and there haven't been any consequences? Like, again, it's one of those, what's underneath the question, because that's really what needs to be addressed. Not necessarily putting it on blast where it's out in the public, but making sure that people are doing what they're supposed to, to address the issue. So, I guess my response to the question is, is that I would, in my role, make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to, to make sure the organization is healthy and productive. And healthy and productive means that if there, we need to have difficult conversations, then we sit down and we have those difficult conversations, but we do it in a respectful way, and we address the issue and we move on. And if discipline needs to come out of that, then what comes out of that?
All right.
Our community is highly invested in our schools. How have you engaged with communities in the past? How will you introduce yourself to the community and maintain connections? And how will you make yourself available to the community?
So, in the past, I've taken, I've done strategies like coffees and teas, and I've visited different schools for their PTO meetings, and I've gone to the libraries and to the better, the business associations within the community. In the past, I've worked with realtors to put together prospectus for the schools that they can include with their materials, that they're sharing out with people who are looking to buy homes in the community. There are a number of different things that you can do, and, you know, all of those have been successful. We did a huge strategic plan, planning session that involved a lot of people down in South Kingstown, and we got a lot of people involved with that and being active members of that. And in Gilmontague, we did a Nishikashi Fishbone Root Cause Analysis with internal and external folks to address our dropout rate, and that was very eye-opening. One of the things that came out of that experience is that we made, everyone was operating on the assumption that the female students who dropped out, dropped out because they were pregnant. And what we discovered by doing that root cause analysis is that's not what happened. What happens is that the students who got pregnant, got pregnant after they dropped out. So, that was a kind of an eye-opening experience. What was also successful from that is that we understood, we found out that there were small organizations, nonprofits, that were doing good work within the community. We aligned ourselves with those nonprofits to put in a credit recovery program in local communities, and that was beneficial, because that allowed people who needed to do credit recovery in the evening to go to those places where they wouldn't, may not necessarily come to the school. So, there, you know, I can tell you a million different things that we've done, I guess that I've done in the past. I guess here, what, one of the things I'd do is, I would start with your PTO and your sports boosters and build out from there. I would start with your business organizations and build out from there. I would start with your local civic leaders, your town manager, your select board, or town council, and build out from there, and kind of build relationships and things from that perspective.
What skills and experience do you have developing budgets and prioritizing spending?
So, I was just looking at your budget when I was sitting in the conference room after I got through, looking at all the pictures on the walls, and it's a level service budget. It's probably been a level service budget for the last couple of years. Your entitlements haven't increased that much over the last couple of years. So, I've built budgets from a school perspective, I've built budgets from a district perspective, I've built budgets from when there's Esser money flowing, and they're just giving away Clearly, you had a process that you used to create this document, this budget document. My question is, was that process, did that process work? Did it involve enough people? I know you have a budget subcommittee. I saw the minutes of those, for those, when those were available. I saw the postings of the agendas when those were available. The agenda just said budget, so it didn't give you a lot of information, but it gave you some information. But it's, the question really becomes, what's the budget process that I would use? And I would personally start with your administration and department heads and things like that, and go from there. Again, you want to do your all-funds financial analysis when you come in, and an all-funds financial analysis is real simple. It's just, these are all the funds that are used to run the organization. So, once you do your all-funds financial analysis and you've aligned your resources, then building your budget on the backend becomes easier. The only unknown that you do not know for sure as you go through the budget process is what you're getting for entitlements or grants. But again, they've been pretty steady over the last couple of years, so you have some numbers that you could put in, plus or minus 3%, plus or minus 5%, unless something drastically happens, and then if something drastically happens, it happens to everyone, and you'd be aware of that. So, once that process has been developed and fettered out, then you just kind of go through it. And this is, this is why I think it's important that you want to look at your curriculum instruction and intervention, and you want to involve teachers, because if there's something that comes out of that experience, when you're looking at those things, that will have an impact on the budget, you want to do those things early. Right? So, for the example, our work in Gilmontague, when we discovered we didn't have a credit recovery system, and we used nonprofits in the local community, that had some small financial obligations, because we were just moving computers down to their establishment, but still, we had some financial obligations that had to do with insurance and things like that, and stuff that we had to do. But, and we were fortunate enough to have some flexibility in the budget, but those sort of things. Like, most school districts don't have $15,000 sitting around in a school budget, so you want to plan and be mindful of those budget implications with those audits, those early-on audits, and how you use the resources that you have.
Thank you.
So, how will you prioritize the various issues that need to be addressed here in Ware? It's a pretty broad paintbrush, right?
It's a pretty broad... Well, let's be honest with you, that's kind of the question that, kind of, where I've been having some cognitive dissonance, because I think the priority, and you guys lived it, I just researched it, right? So, I'm aware that I may be way off base, right? But I think, in my mind, the priority would be building relationships and re-establishing trust. That would be the first priority. Married with that would be communication systems, whether it be communication with the, clearly, you need a system to communicate with the committee, you need a communication mechanism with your administration and your administrators, you definitely want to meet on a regular basis with your association leadership. Right? So, I think communication and relationships is the first big rock. The second big rock would be probably building out your, the mechanisms for your team. Right? So, you have principals, you have assistant principals, you have, you have people who are in critical positions, who have their ears on the ground, who have a feel for their building. They know what the beat is, so you want to hear from them and figure out, and then clearly, discussing with you guys. I don't want to speculate about pain points, and I don't think it's appropriate to blame anyone about frustrations of the past. I think it's healthier to figure out what those were, and figure out how to address them, and move the organization forward in a way that's beneficial for all parties involved. And that's another example of why I think the person that comes into this role needs to be a transitional leader and not your permanent leader.
Why are you applying for an interim superintendent position? What personal objectives or goals do you have as an interim in this short time?
That's a really good question. My last superintendency happened in Rhode Island, and there's, Massachusetts is different. It's a beast. It's a different beast. And I felt that some folks have come from outside of the Commonwealth, who've come in into superintendencies, and they've struggled, and in many cases have failed, because they didn't realize that it's a beast, and it's a different beast. And so, my end-goal aspiration is to return to the superintendency. But I'm also wise enough to realize there are some things that I know and there are some things I need to know. And an interim provides an opportunity to continue my growth and continue my knowledge base, but it also provides me an opportunity to use the skillset that I have for your community and for our community. It provides me the opportunity to use the skillset that I have to help mend some of these frustrations of the past, and position the district in a place where it can continue to provide excellent service for students and families, and get it in a spot where you hand it off to the next person who will take it to its next level of growth. So, that's why I'm applying. I don't know why the others applied.
What experience do you have working with unions? Can you share a time when you needed to compromise on a key issue?
On a key issue? Just one? So, I, I don't want to date myself, so I won't do that. But I've been an administration administrator as a principal, superintendent, and assistant superintendent for quite some time, and I've worked with unions. Sometimes we don't always agree, but we disagree respectfully, and long as we keep talking, I think there's, that's healthy, right? It's like a marriage. You don't always agree with your husband, or your wife, or your partner, and you might have a disagreement, but that doesn't end the relationship, right? You kind of move on from, you work to move on from it. What happened last spring in this community was a pain point of frustration, a pain point of disappointment, a pain point of fill-in-the-blank. When an organization, in this case, your union, got to the point where they exercised what actions they did, that means that pain point was a point of pain that had been rubbed long before that action happened. So, the goal here would be, I think, when you say, "How have you worked with them, or what have you done in the past?", maybe the better way, a way to phrase that is, "What strategies would you use, Mark, to work with the association?" And I've mentioned a few of them, meeting on a regular basis. I mentioned talking about building relationships. I've mentioned making sure that teachers are part of the problem, part of problem-solving, that they have a viewpoint, they have, they're the ones down in the trenches doing the work. I think those are some of the things that you want to put in, make sure that are in place, regardless of who ends up with the position. Those are some things you want to put in place. I really think you need to sit down. I would sit down and talk with association leaders and figure out, "Okay, what happened? How did we get to this point? How did we get the train off the track? Let's get the train back on the track, and let's get it moving in the right direction." We all want the same thing. You know, at the end of the day, it's for the kids. But somewhere along the way, that got lost for whatever reason. I also would, I understand that there was some sort of attorney doing some sort of assessment or evaluation. I don't know if that happened or not, but if there is a document from that, I'd be interested in reading that and assessing out what, the impact of that. And I'm sure you've probably already taken steps to kind of sever ties with the consulting organization, but that might be something else that you may want to consider if you haven't done so already, is making sure that, because they won't be successful. I've done outside consulting, and I know that once something like that happens, it's hard to be successful. So, they won't be successful in their role, and they, they'll know that too. So, making sure that they have an exit strategy, that's what, as well. So, once those things are done, then it's the painstaking work of every single day building trust. And it's not painstaking meaning painful. Painstaking in the sense that it needs to be purposeful, and it's purposeful because of what the situation was here. So, I don't know if that answered your question, but that's an answer.
All right. Last question.
Okay.
What is your approach to stabilizing morale during leadership transitions?
Good question. That's a really good question.
I didn't write that one.
You didn't write that one?
I wish I had.
I don't think there's anything wrong, and I, this is sometimes the biggest challenge. Honor the work that's already been done by the people who've done it, right? So, that helps stabilize, I think, communication, communication, communication helps stabilize transitions. I think getting people involved, especially if you're, because you've got two transitions here. You have the transition of the interim, and then you're setting up a transition for your permanent. And so, you would want involvement of people to make sure all of that is successful on all ends, right? And how you structure that, the process you use, the transparency you have with that process, the involvement, the people involved, those sort of things. I think giving, giving some credence to the discomfort that those may feel in this process. Some people will be perfectly fine. Some people will want to know more from the leader. Some people will want a lot more from the leader. So, being understanding of the fact that different people will have different needs, and make every effort to meet those needs as you can with the structures and routines you put in place. I know that in my last transitions, when our leader is leaving, and they're leaving under difficult circumstances, or, you know, that, you can't ignore it, but you also can't harp on it. Right? You build your team, you take the steps to reconnect with people, and you go from there. And so, the, more so purpose by design than anything else. What are the purposeful steps that you're going to take, you know, transitioning into the position? You know, you're going to send out letters to the community, check. You're going to have a meet and greet, check. You're going to meet with your association, check. You're going to start implementing process of an entry plan, realizing that you're not establishing that entry plan for the purpose of being the permanent, you're establishing that entry plan to do two things. One thing is to take the steps to build relationships, and the other thing is to find out the hopes and dreams and frustrations of those who are within the district and within the community, so you can then utilize that as you go forward. so you can then utilize that as you go forward. And so it's more so those purposeful steps that you take. That's how you would manage that transition. Change is difficult, but change can be managed if it's done right and if the person is aware that they have to manage it and the strategies they have to use to manage it. And I've shared some of them already.
Thank you.
No more questions? We have two minutes if you want to let us know anything else that we should know and...
I have two minutes? I have one question and then anyone could, I mean, chime in. What's the journey like for a student?
What's the what?
What's the journey like for a student?
What's the journey like for a student?
Yes. What's the journey like for a student in this district? What's it like for them?
Downhill. They start up there at SMK and then they come down to the middle school and then they come down to the high school.
Okay. That's fair enough.
That's the journey.
If they play sports, they end up in the gym which is below us.
There you go. More downhill.
More downhill. And they try to get that parking space that's close to the door in the lower parking lot. And that's an accomplishment.
What else? What's it like for a student going through this system? What's it like for a family who has a student going through this system? It's a journey. What's that journey like for them?
Well, for the parents, a lot of them, it's very familiar because a lot of them are people that went through our school system. So for some, I mean, in some cases, they know the teachers. They definitely know the buildings. They know the traditions and everything that have gone through this. So for a lot of families, it's very familiar. And then you've got families like mine, who I did not grow up here and I have my first student going through. I've got one that's going to start in kindergarten this year and I have one moving to fourth grade and I have another little one on the way. So for some of us, it's all new. So I guess it depends on...
The perspective.
Yeah, it all depends on whether you've been here a while or not.
I think the journey, I've put six kids through this system.
Six?
And they've all graduated successfully, but it's not without frustration with some of the things alluded to and the underlying issues that you're wondering about. So, but you can make it work if you're dedicated as a parent, you work with your students, you try to reach out to the teachers. There's growth processes, there's no doubt. Make sure you've heard about it, read about it. And it's a new, it's a new culture now, new generation. So I think we're trying to adapt to that and understand and kind of, you know, start a new lane, I guess, and pick up where we left off and leverage what was good and bring in something new and work towards excellence, work towards what our constituents, what the families want and what they voiced.
We have a flat tire right now. We know how to fix it. We're going to fix it. We just need someone to help us fix it. Because we're just part-time board. We don't run the day-to-day operations and that's what, in a sense, we're looking for. There's someone to be able to handle that and, but the tire will get fixed and we'll be back on the road and we will be good.
Cool. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
For inviting me.
And phone number on your application is the best one to reach out?
Is the best one to reach me out. I'm sure we didn't talk about achieving. I was ready.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, we've got to turn this one around quick because it's already 9:20.
Why don't we just...
I'm just going to stand and stretch and then we'll...
Mutus for about a minute. Okay, we are back and we are at our last candidate, candidate number four. It's Michael Wood. And would you like to do the questions?
Let's go back to the original one.
Okay, let's start there.
We'll go this way.
And we'll go.
You sure you don't want to start this thing?
I'll start.
Okay, I'm ready.
Keep your toes, wake up.
Sure.
Okay.
That works.
So I'm number three.
Yep.
Got it. Thank you.
How would you approach an interim superintendent position differently from a permanent superintendent position, if at all?
Yeah, I mean, I've done a couple of interims and I think that you have to start thinking you're there forever because you want to get to know people, you want to know what's going on in the school system. You have to understand where there are issues and where there are strengths and where there are weaknesses. And that's whether you're there forever or whether you're there for six months or a year. You're going to lead according to what the plan is either already established or the plan is that you're going to build with the stakeholders in the system. So my approach would be pretty much the same whether I were here for a full school year or 10 more school years. And I would be listening and learning the environment and the culture and trying to build together with the school committee and the parent community and the community as a whole, along with the teachers and students, what, where wants for its students and its definition of a graduate.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it's well-known that teacher para and substitute shortages have become more common in schools across the country, are struggling to put qualified people in front of students. Our school district is no exception. In fact, our high school has become notorious for warehousing several classrooms worth of students in the library for full instructional periods because there's no one to teach them in the classroom. Do you have the skill or creativity to try and get these students back into a productive classroom and not just babysat? Explain how you've addressed staffing shortages of this nature in the past.
Sure. So I think the approach that I would take to that issue is to really look at how we're canvassing sites for new teachers and understanding what the attraction they're looking for to come to a new setting and what we can offer. And really become a media mecca, if you will, and really advertise who we are as a school district and why we're a great place to start teaching or to come and be a part of a growing, you know, community of learners. So I think that you can't take that as, oh, they're not coming. You've got to really work at it. It's a problem to be solved. Like you said, it's not, you're not alone in that. We're all fighting for a smaller group of people who want to become teachers. I think that there's got to be a way to, multiple way to look at how we solve the problem. It might include our own efforts to, you know, tap kids who are graduating from where high school, junior and senior high school and follow them along and encourage them to become teachers so they'll come back as teachers. And, you know, go out into the community and find people with degrees who may not want to be teaching forever, but who may want to come in and teach a class or two in an area of interest. I was in Hatfield for three years. We looked at doing this for an engineering class that we offered. We didn't need a full-time person. We just needed someone to come in and teach this one class at Smith Academy. And, you know, that was something that worked. You know, those are the kinds of things that you have to do. You've got to be creative. You can't just sit back and think, whoa, me. You've got to be out there pounding the pavement, calling the colleges, looking for the graduates, trying to track them down and invite them in for interviews and see what they're doing. I'd also look at our own staff, you know, make sure that we're not missing someone who has an interest or even a license in a particular area that we could convince to come over. Maybe they're teaching elementary where we might be able to find more qualified candidates, but they also have a license to do mathematics and we need a mathematics teacher. And what's the enticement to bring them over from the elementary school to come over to the junior, senior high school? So there are different things that I think you can do. The main thing you have to do is you've got to realize that you can't just sit back and say, whoa, me. You've got to be doing, have a multi-pronged attack to solve the problem.
All right. What assessment protocols have you used in the past to evaluate administrators and their performance and achievement results? And how will you hold administrators accountable in your tenure here?
So I think that the protocol that the state has is actually pretty, pretty good. The issue or the way that I approach it, I think, makes it more individualized to the leader in that I really try to talk with the leader and say, you know, we're going to be working together for a year. I can help you if you tell me upfront where you need help or I can be watching you and play got you with you. And that's not how I would approach something. I want an open and honest dialogue with leadership in the district. I want to understand what it is I can do to help them, where, what it is I can do to find help for them, what it is I can do to celebrate the strengths that they have and maybe make them a connection to another leader in the district that's also working on something that is a similar strength that they have. So my approach is to use the license, not the licensure, but the leadership evaluation tool that's already in place in most school systems following the state's protocol and really just try to mold it to the individual in their strengths and weaknesses and really try to emphasize in our conversations how to help them and how to celebrate what strengths they have. There's no magic to it. Again, you're going to hear it from me a lot. I do a lot of listening. I try to learn from what I hear. I try to sit back and pay attention to what I see and I bring that back as a mirror to help evaluate leaders and teachers as needed.
Thank you.
Okay, our special education services have been called to question quite a bit. We have had an audit and we have important reviews from the state coming up. What do you bring to the table to help us make sure we're providing the correct services to the correct students day one of the school year and to prepare for these reviews?
Well, I've been a director of special education in multiple districts of different sizes and it's really a passion of mine because I look at it first and foremost. It's about teaching and learning. And, you know, I think that one of the things to do is to, you know, invite the state in and be a partner with them. Don't be afraid of them. They too want us to succeed. They know the process. I know that Dr. Johnston isn't there anymore at the state level, but he was certainly somebody that I had a lot of respect for in terms of helping guide the growth that Massachusetts has had in meeting the needs of special needs students. First and foremost, I think, you know, what we have to do is we have to be honest with ourselves in where we are, where we have deficits, if we have them. And again, we have to figure out where we can celebrate so that people see that we're being honest with ourselves. We're not trying to hide anything. We're just simply trying to recognize that this is an area we have to do some work on, but this is an area we really feel good about and we feel strong about. It takes really a team effort when it comes to special education. You have to have your building leadership really understand how special education and special educators need support within the school to do the work that they need to do. It's really about building a culture that we support all students and that we all have special needs in some respect and we have to pay attention to the individual needs of every student. Some have more and we have to take a look at what those needs are and make sure that we're building services. I prefer that word rather than programs because I like to see our kids in their community, always striving towards being part of the whole and making sure that when we work with kids, that we only work with them in smaller settings when it's absolutely necessary to the skill or the structure of the learning that needs to take place. But, you know, I, again, it's not, it's not something that's magic. In other words, I'm not going to be able to come in here and see where there's a problem and say, oh, here's a switch and I can fix that. But it's building that culture of understanding of where we have to grow and working towards a growth plan, if you will, to make that happen. And that's going to take everybody on board. That's going to take the school committee understanding where we might need more resources. It's going to take the full community to understand that it's really a culture of understanding that if all kids can, if all kids can be educated within the town where in our public schools, it's better for the community in every way. And that's a culture that takes time to build if it's not already established. It really is something that you have to work towards and strive for. And I think that in my experience in 40 years in schools as a teacher or an administrator, I've always strived towards doing that and being that. And I take great pride in that.
Thank you.
As you've become more aware of how things have been going for our staff in the last year or so, what message will you have for them in your initial meeting?
I think the message is always, today is today and tomorrow is tomorrow. And we can plan together today to make tomorrow a little bit different and work towards where we want to go and what we want to be. You know, whatever your history is, it's just that, it's history. It's not something to disrespect and it's not something to ignore, but what I need to do is bring a level of positivity and a growth mindset to the environment and to build towards a culture of that. Because it's not just leadership that needs to have that, our teachers need to have that, our parents, our kids need to have that. They need to see that they can be a part of something big and bigger. I was in the room and I was reading the wall and, you know, it's great to celebrate all the things that are good about where public schools and where is the town and the community. And, but it's got to be everywhere, you know? We've got to be looking at what our schools contribute to and get that out into the public eye so that the public sees really what they're paying for on a regular basis. Because that's oftentimes, you know, the only time that the public sees what they pay for is that one community meeting, in-town meeting, and they presented a number. And we should be in the forefront of their thinking all the time. We are the biggest investment they're making in their community. And in every way possible, we should have kids out in the community, we should have our services celebrated in the community, we should have the honest conversations about where we have issues in the community and have those on your public access television and out there. And again, always talking about, that's today and here's our plan for tomorrow so that nobody ever walks away thinking our hands are raised and we're not doing anything. We have a plan. We're going to see where it takes us. And again, because these are good minds, these are educated minds, they have the best intentions for the students in the world. So work with us and we'll bring tomorrow. And then we'll take an evaluation of that and keep going. And if things are working great, great. If they're not working great, then you stop and see what you need to do to change. You know, nothing is locked and you've got to believe that so that you can always make change tomorrow.
Culture is one of the most important aspects of any place of employment, but it's also one of the hardest to change. Add to that, this community tends to be made up of people that will either go through our schools, are going through our schools, or have gone through our schools. How have you approached school cultures in the past and how do you see yourself approaching it here and where?
So culture is probably the one thing that people misidentify and misdescribe because either they haven't, they haven't paid attention to really what the culture is or they're too, they're wearing blinders to what they're doing themselves to know that they are either part of the issues that are around or that they are... that they are either part of the issues that are around, or that they are just trying to stay in their lane and not be a part of solutions that are possible. I would say that the kind of leadership that I bring to an environment is mostly about culture in the sense that I think it's the foundation to which you build everything else on. When you think of a classroom teacher, what do they do in the first three to six weeks of school? They build routines, they build a sense of belonging, they build a sense of what their classroom is about so that their kids come to that classroom and know what learning is like. Well, that's what the superintendent does, that's what the administration does. They have to build together a sense of belonging. This is why you come to work in where public schools, this is why you send your children to where public schools. This is what we're about, this is what we're trying to achieve. Again, whatever is history is history, but today we're building a culture of togetherness and problem-solving that's about taking a look at the best building of a foundation that you can have for the school district to thrive.
Nepotism is a problem in many school systems. How have you addressed this issue in the past, and do you think you could address it if needed here in the same way even as an interim?
Yes. I mean, so, it's a double-edged sword, right? If you have a parent and there's child, parent is working here, they tell their child who's just graduated high school or college that there's a job opening, come apply, and we're looking for people to come work here. So, we have to look at that and be understanding of that. But we also have to build the expectation that we have a culture that is about, you're an individual here, you're not his daughter, you're not his wife, you're an employee of the where public schools, and these are our expectations when you walk through these doors. And this is what we want you to accomplish when you're working with our students, and what we want you to accomplish when you're working with our parents and our families. And that's part of the leadership training, evaluation of leadership that I would go through to help them understand that you can't ignore when there's a conflict between or that involves family. You've got to hit it straight on, you've got to communicate it, you've got to teach people how to stay in their own lane. And, you know, sometimes you have to evaluate that when, let's say it's a parent and a child, or a husband and a wife, and one or the other doesn't stay in their own lane. Then you have to evaluate the person who's not staying in their lane and make it clear to them, this is not your, you're not the husband, you're not the wife, you're the employee, and this is, this is the rule, this is the expectation that we're holding everybody to, including your spouse, your child, whatever. And it's all about teaching that expectation in that building of culture that when you walk through those doors, your relationship is to the where public schools, not to your family. It's to the expectations and the goals and achievements of our kids. It takes a while. I don't want to mislead anybody to think that it's going to happen within a month. But it does take some frank conversations. It does take, in most cases, if it rises to this, and I'm going to guess that it probably has, it takes a strong school committee to understand what the superintendent is trying to do and to support that so that whatever work he or she is trying to do doesn't get sabotaged when it gets to the school committee and somehow gets a public airing, and then all of a sudden, we don't want to pay attention to what where public schools wants to do. We want to make sure that these two are happy and they work together well in the public school. So, it does take all of us to understand the culture and the direction of the culture that we want to build, and that there are going to be some hard feelings along the way. There, people don't always want to change, and I'm not saying that they have to change. I'm saying that they have to be aware of how their, how their actions are either interfering or supporting the direction that the district is trying to move toward. And that just takes frank conversations. They don't have to be contradictory or harsh, they just have to be had, and I'm very good at having them.
Thank you.
This might be a good segue. Even as an interim, you will need to establish procedure and enforce policy. How do you see yourself addressing resistance to change in this short time?
So, one way to stem off later resistance is to, along the way, help people understand why policy needs to change and/or why it needs to be written. And it's that part of the journey that we sometimes forget. So, you've got to involve the teachers' association, you've got to involve, if you have a para association, you've got to involve their leadership to help them understand what's trying to be accomplished with either a changed policy or a new policy being written. You know, it's been in the news, there's a cell phone ban coming. That's going to be a huge challenge. It's going to be a challenge not only for our students, it's going to be a challenge for our staff, because I'll be here to say, we have to be role models, and that's going to be hard. I don't know what it's going to look like yet, I haven't given it that much thought. I've been on a different, different role in terms of understanding how to implement that policy, and it's a year away. But that's going to be a hard road to go down. But we've got to start that journey now, obviously, it's been passed, and we've got to understand what, as the adults in the schools, what our role is going to be to model the best behavior around using a cell phone and how it's going to be used. And that's going to take, obviously, some changes. You know, I, I have seen circumstances where teachers leave classrooms to take a phone call, and it's not about school. That can't happen, that shouldn't have happened, I made sure that that didn't happen, but they look at me like, what do you mean? I can see the kids through the window. No, we don't do that here, that's not allowed. So, as long as you involve the stakeholders from the beginning, or at least at a pertinent place along the journey, I think that you can help, there will always be resistance, but you can help reduce the resistance, right? You can, you can, you can help people understand why. They're not going to like it necessarily, always, but they, they can't argue that we didn't try to help understand. And the other thing to help people understand is we're all in that together, right? So, if there are changes to how adults are going to use cell phones to be good role models, I've got to follow those rules, the principal has to follow those rules, and we've got to figure out how to make sure that we're not shirking that responsibility.
Thank you.
It's me, right? What experience and qualifications do you have to complete the NEAS accreditation currently being done at where junior senior high school?
So, I've never been a principal of a high school. That's probably the one role I've never had, and so I haven't been intimately involved in that process, but as a superintendent, I've certainly overseen several NEAS accreditation experiences and know the kinds of conversations that need to have be had along the way to make sure, again, that you've prepared well for that process. And my, my biggest takeaway from NEAS is helping people understand that, because I have been on the other side, I've been on NEAS visiting teams, and so I do know what the conversations are on that side of the table as well. And for the most part, my experience is by the team leader that I've worked with, it's about helping the school really see where they need to work. But more importantly, they do, there are a lot of conversations at those tables at the late hour about how to help all of the community see what work needs to be done, because they, they want to help the leadership team, the principal, superintendent, build the dialogue that needs to happen in front of the school committee, in front of the community, about what changes may need to happen, what, what kinds of things need to come down the, down the road. You know, it might be making sure that you don't have study halls. Well, that's going to take an investment for resources, right? That's offering a schedule that has every, every class, every block scheduled with a class that you can get at least 25 students in that want to be there, and that's part of the curriculum. So it's not just a, so that it's part of the student meeting, the graduation requirements. And so, NEAS is fascinating. I know some schools are debating whether or not to go through the process or not, and I, I have not been in a district that's had that conversation yet, but, you know, I think people have to understand what NEAS is about, and it's really about holding up a mirror to what you're doing as a practice. It helps, in one school district that I was in, it helped us immensely with relooking or looking at our special education services and how we were not meeting the needs of students with disabilities. And that was amazing to me, that they saw that, because I was worried they weren't going to see it because we were a highly achieving high school. And, but they, the team caught it and really drove home some really important recommendations that I think helped the principal see it, as well as the staff, that work had to be done in that area. So, that's what I can offer about NEAS. It's an interesting process.
So, how would you make sure that your HR procedures are transparent regarding qualified candidates, evaluation tools, discipline, complaints, et cetera?
Well, I'll start with the latter part of that. It's very hard with discipline because personal matters are confidential, and they're, they are confidential for a reason, because everybody deserves dignity and respect. And so, it's really important that throughout whatever process, whatever issue is leading to a possible discipline, that along the way, the teacher, or the para, or the custodian, or the principal, or the superintendent, understands what the steps are that are being taken and why it's going that way. I mean, I've certainly been involved in enough disciplinary matters with teachers as a superintendent and a principal that I feel like I can take a teacher through that process both and get to that point at the why, whether there's discipline, or whether the teacher really gets it and looks for an improvement plan that will work for that person, and go back into the classroom and be committed to it. And I've seen that work, and I have seen it not work, but there's a process for that as well. But I've also seen where you've got to go through the disciplinary, and it's hard, it's sometimes very long, it can take some circuitous routes to get where everybody thinks you should have been, you know, at day one when the claim was made. Everybody's an HR director when a claim gets made, you know? But you've got to go through those processes to respect the individual and to protect the district. You don't want your legal fees to be exorbitant because of mistakes that I make or the principal makes along the way. And again, the, what I try to do for everybody involved is help them understand that, first of all, you can't say it's not personal because it's a person's job, and so it's always personal to them, you know? It is their job. And, but they have to understand what responsibility they need to take, and you have to have a good investigation to make sure your facts are good and what they tell you. And, you know, sometimes the facts don't really support what the public seems to think they know. And so you've got to make the difficult decision to say, we're going to, we're going to go through a growth plan, but you need to understand that the growth plan really is about how you're going to manage the perception, because the perception isn't real, but it's out there, and you need to figure that out. And, you know, in a small district, that's really hard to do. I'll be honest with you, it's really hard to do. Once, once the perception is out there, it's very difficult to rebuild your reputation. But, you know, when, when it's wrongfully assailed, I will do everything in my power to help that individual rebuild. Right, if the, if the teacher or whoever is at fault, I will do everything in my power to make sure that person doesn't work here and is not with kids.
Our community is highly invested in our schools. How have you engaged with communities in the past? How will you introduce yourself to our community and maintain, maintain connections? And how will you make yourself available to the community?
So, my approach is, I have, I know it's cliche to say it, I have a very open door policy. My, my administrative assistants have, have made it very clear to me that I'm too welcoming to people. Like, if you just stop in my office, I'm going to see you, if I'm not already behind closed doors, because you've made the effort to be there, I need to make the effort to meet you. I think that, again, I would want to talk to people about how to, what, introduce myself to the community, what's the best way? Is there, is it a forum? Is it through cable TV? Is it through a letter to, for our website? It's probably multiple strategies because you want to get out there. But I want to get out there with something that's valuable, and I don't want it to be, it's not about me, it's about what we're going to try to do this year, and what we're going to try to accomplish, and how we're going to do that, and what are the resources we're using to get that. So I want the message to be fruitful, I don't want it to be, again, about me. And, you know, I think that the superintendent in a small town needs to be visible, they need to be at events, they need to be, you know, with kids, they need to be in classrooms, they need to be at the bus pickup, you know? They've got to be able to put a name to a face, and I like that, you know? I think that that's, that's why we come into education, is to work with families, to work with people. So, I'm not, I'm not somebody that's going to close the door behind me and sit at a desk, that's not who I am.
Thank you.
Tell us about your skills and experience you have in developing budgets and prioritizing spending.
So, I, I used to, I had an assistant superintendent for finance who used to say that I was a dangerous superintendent because I knew too much about budgeting, and that I spent too much time going over the development of the budget, because he really, he thought that that was his, his job. But I explained to him that I'm a superintendent, that budget is a policy document more than it is a numbers document. I've got to be able to articulate to anybody who asks, what's in there and why it's there and what it's going to do for our kids. And that's what you are as a superintendent. You're the educational leader, and your policies and your support tools, budget being number one, has to be there. I think I'm a licensed- I think, I'm a licensed business administrator, I think it's something that I know well, I know systems to be able to build budgets. Again, the budgets that I like to build take a lot of time because I like to talk to the people who are going to be impacted by the budgets. So oftentimes, it starts with the school committee about what are your goals? What are your financial goals and expectations? Obviously, your board of selectmen and what their goals and financial expectations are. I don't like to go through the process just to have it torn down or torn apart at town meeting. I want to go into town meeting and get a passed budget. And that takes the art of conversation before we go in there to, again, explain why we've built the budget the way we have. The faculty and staff need to understand why things are there and why things are not there. You know, if there are plans for different growth or added programs, we need to show how over time we're going to build those as opposed to doing it all at once. And that, I think, is a skill that I have and I'm very good at that. I've never lost a budget vote. Well, I take that back, I did lose one in Maine when I was superintendent in Maine, but we passed it on the second try. It was a hot August, 12th of August. And I was leaving for vacation, how dare they do that thing? But we did get it passed. You know, it just, it takes a lot of conversation to build a good budget that's sound, that's explainable, that is defendable. But everybody should know what's in it and why it's there. And that's what I can do.
Thank you.
How will you prioritize the various issues that need to be addressed here and where?
Well, the first priority is to find out what the issues are. And then, you know, through those conversations that I would have with the various stakeholders, the administrative team, lead teachers, parents who feel they have a good conversation to have about the issues that are here. You know, it's about coming out, and I would do this as part of my entry plan, I would spell out, you know, this is a fire, we've got a four alarm blaze here, we've got to put this out. Here's what I think we have as resources to do that. We've got to do this now rather than wait. And I would spell it out in some vernacular so that you kind of saw what the priority ones were, what the priority fives or sixes were. Most importantly, you know, safety, I would say both physical and emotional safety for our kids and for our faculty and staff and our parents and families. Obviously, if we have some kind of financial shortfall, that'll rank right up there as something that we'd have to make sure we were addressing right off the bat. I think that there's, obviously, if there are staffing issues, I look at your website, you do have some staff openings, you know, we've got to figure out a plan for that. And, you know, what are we doing on day one? Who's going to be in front of that classroom? And make sure that we're ready to have licensed staff in the right places at the right time. So I would pretty quickly put that plan together and develop that.
Why are you applying for an interim superintendent's position? What personal objectives or goals do you have as an interim in this short time?
So, that's a great question. So I'm a retired superintendent, I did it for 23 years, I started out very young. And I think I learned a lot in that time. And I think I still have a lot to offer when opportunities like this arise. I have strong skills, I have, I'm always open to learning and getting feedback. And I think that I can take a school system from point A to point B, however it's defined, however we together figure that out, in a way that can be enjoyable and can be valuable for everybody involved. And for that reason, when I saw this opening, I was like, you know, I think that I could be a big help and I could be a resource. And, you know, obviously, you interviewed four or five people and so you have the best view of that, but I think I'm a contender.
Ne. What experience do you have working with unions? Can you share a time when you needed to compromise on a key issue?
Well, every school department that I've ever worked in has a union. And I've been on both sides, I was a vice president of my union when I was a teacher. And, you know, I think the key part about unions, or some people get offended when we use the word union, call them associations, whatever the vernacular is here, it's really about, everybody wants to have a seat at the table and have, be shown dignity and respect. And I think that that's something that I am good at, not just for the sake of having them at the table, but actually listening and figuring out where we need to go and how we need to go there. And it is about helping everybody understand what the goal, end goal is. And I'll give you an example of some difficult conversations that I've had with unions. In one district, we were trying to, we actually had an issue where the high school, it was a high performing high school, and the, there were a number of teachers who simply felt they did not have to grade work and report it back to kids in a timely fashion. And then the middle of the quarter would come and parents would be complaining that they don't know what their child's grades are because these are, as most parents are, they're on top of their kids for grades. And the end of the quarter would come and a couple of students would fail. And the teacher had the attitude, quite a few of the teachers had the attitude, well, that's what the student earned. And it wasn't about whether or not the student earned that, it was the parent and the student in many cases wanted to know earlier to be able to know how to change it or to impact it in some meaningful way. So at the same time, we were kind of going through this process of trying to understand how to move, it was the very beginnings of Power School. And so we brought the two conversations together and said, okay, we're going to use Power School and we're going to develop a policy that allows parents to have access to it. So they can just look at the grades, they don't have to have the conversation with the teacher, they're just going to go in and look at the grades.
Right.
Now, I think now, that's pretty commonplace.
It is.
Then, that was heresy. And, I mean, I'm talking almost 10 years ago, 15 years ago. And my teacher union did not want anything to do with that. And they fought it tooth and nail. And because it was policy, they didn't really have a vote at the table, so to speak. But I went through the process, long, many meetings process of trying to help them understand the value of, this is going to help you in the long run. You're going to build relationships with kids and parents by letting them have access to these grades. So we wrote the policy to say, if you have a graded item, it has to be graded within two weeks and entered into Power School so that parents could see it. And we went through this real long implementation process that I felt was way overblown because the teachers resisted it. And I was very clear, if you don't do it, now we're talking insubordination because it's school committee policy that you do it this way. And that was new to them as well, that's not a conversation that they ever had and they'd never had a superintendent or a principal that ever put them in that position. And I said, I'm telling you right now, it's school committee policy that you do this and if you don't do this, your principal is going to put you in subordination and write you up. I'm telling you right now. And it took a few of those letters to get them to understand, I was not backing down, it was already public now that the policy was there and the teachers had to be doing it. And so now teachers individually were getting a lot of pushback that if they weren't individually doing it. So that brought a lot of teachers just to do it because they didn't want that parental piece on their doorstep. And, you know, we had a few holdups and we just kept writing letters until we got to a point where, one, very prominent, very otherwise successful teacher was going to very much be suspended because we were at that point, we were in the fourth quarter and he had not done it. And when he realized that that was what was going to happen, he finally said, okay, I'm going, I'll do this. Now, it was for the next year. Okay, I compromise, I said, okay. But you've got to be in it for the long haul if you believe in something. And it wasn't about Power School, I couldn't have cared less about Power School, but it was about, if grades are about learning and kids need to understand the feedback that you're giving them, and I hadn't even gotten into the conversation about feedback versus grades, then it's got to be timely and it's got to be meaningful and it's got to be valuable. And they've got to have it. And that's the conversation that I had with them and we eventually got there. And, you know, the next year started out with him testing the waters, he absolutely did. And, you know, we just reminded him, it's one day, two days, three days, we're just going to do it. We finally won the battle. Thank you.
All right, last question. What is your approach to stabilizing morale during leadership transitions, especially after throwing around the insubordination point?
So it's about making sure that the broader community understands what you're trying to accomplish. So like in every communication that I had, it was all about students, about learning, about feedback, you know, in that particular example. So what I try to do is get out in front of, when I see that, you know, this is going to be in the public eye a lot quicker than I would want it to be, for example, even. And I try to get the messaging out there. And to use the more common or current vernacular, I try to make sure the narrative that's out there is my narrative so that people understand why I'm trying to do what I'm trying to do. Now, if I've done my job reasonably well, the majority of the people internally know that's what I'm trying to do. And so they support the narrative when they're having their conversations. Because I'm amazed at the conversations that can happen in classrooms between teachers and kids, especially more adult kids and more, you know, in high schools and in middle schools. And it's healthy and I'm all supportive of it. But you've got to make sure you have everybody in on that communication very early on so that the narrative stays strong throughout what could be backlash or some other kind of harm. And so whatever methods that I eventually use as communication with the community, whether it be the website, newsletter, whatever, I have to be consistently getting the message out there about the changes that are coming, why they're coming, and how we're going to achieve them together.
Thank you.
Great.
That's the last of the questions?
Okay.
You've got a couple minutes, if there's anything else you want to say to us or ask or...
I think that, I guess the one question is, so are you looking like it to start Monday?
Well...
Can you?
No. That would be difficult, only because if, and I'm hoping we get to that point tonight and we choose somebody, we would then have to verify licenses and query checks and all this other stuff. And also, a contract would have to be negotiated.
Yeah.
And therefore, and it has to be then brought before us as a group to approve and then the person could start. So we're probably looking at a timeline of, I know I push the timelines, but we're probably looking at maybe a week from Monday, that would be maybe the earliest. That would put us at just before school starts.
Right.
And there is a couple of events going on, like a block party and stuff, which would be a good way to meet and greet and also prepare for teachers coming back and the most important thing is students coming back.
Right.
So that's, that's the plan.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had like an interim to the interim plan, like, you know, you have somebody in charge now and assuming...
We do, we have an acting, but it is very difficult for that person to be juggling two balls.
Sure.
And so we want to, also, we also want to start, but everybody comes back with someone in the corner office, that's how I put it. Because it's, you know, to your point when you were talking about priorities and stuff, what are the fires? Well, we've sort of been putting out some fires and delaying some things because we can delay them, but sooner or later, like the higher one we've been working on. And working on, I mean, the principals and everybody's been working on it. So that, it may look like we have a few positions out there, there's probably only a couple because we're waiting for, you know, things to come back, fingerprints, query checks, all that stuff.
Yeah.
That's the other thing, we need fingerprints. So that takes a few days.
Sure.
So that's what we're looking at. No, this is not an interim for an interim, which would be October or Halloween night or something when you'd start. No, this is like as soon as possible, but not tomorrow and not Monday.
I was being facetious, but yeah, no, I just wanted to get a sense of things. Yeah, I don't really have any questions, like I said, I've had this kind of opportunities before, I kind of know how to come in, hit the ground, so.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
The phone number that's on the application, that's the best one?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
You have the record, this is the latest interview I've ever had.
Oh.
To record for us too.
We're proud.
Well, I'll get out of you here so you can continue your work.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Meet you up.
Take a minute or do we want to move into the next thing?
If I could have like two minutes to just look through this?
Yes.
And then I have a proposal that all of us just write a name down and if we all write the same name, then we're done.
But if we don't all write the same name...
If we don't all write the same name, we can have a discussion, for sure.
Okay.
Secret ballot?
Everybody's in agreement? Does everybody feel comfortable that they've heard everything they can? He has left the room, right? And that we can make a decision based on what we've heard tonight and, to me, after going through the resumes again today?
Yeah.
To see if we can come to an agreement and pick someone because I think we have a pretty good feel.
I agree.
And so we may need to discuss it if we don't all, is this considered a secret ballot? And then we'd have to vote on that person, but we can do it that way.
Yeah, I just feel like we could save a lot of time, like if all of us have the same person, there's no point in discussing.
Okay.
All right, so give me like three minutes to just look through this.
Okay, we'll take Stan. We good, Stan? We good Stan?
Oh, we're good now.
Now we are? Okay, thank you.
To catch people up that didn't hear us, we're down to two.
We're down to two people.
Benanda and Wood.
A quick ballot.
Our secret ballot was not unanimous.
And we're down to two people. And we are now going to discuss the pros and cons of each person. Like I said, she has sped experience, Maureen. And...
Well, her experience definitely can't be rivaled. I mean, she would have her 50th year of education
Yes.
with us. You're not going to find anybody else that's more experienced than that.
Mm-mm.
I liked that she has been through the NIASC process
Yes.
a lot.
Yes.
What else did I write down?
Very extensive with budget. Probably they both have in that sense, so that one's kind of a...
I think they're both equal in budget. And a quality that I was looking for in these candidates is a quality that I think is great for a superintendent, is just being very pragmatic and being very logical and... But not letting the logic of it hold them back from making big strides. And I feel like both of those candidates have that.
I think, I think one of the things that tipped it for me is I think she knows this better. I don't know whether it's the research or whether she's been listening to what's going on, you know, in the past year. But I think she knows this better. She knows, in a sense, where we're hurting. She knows, in a sense, what we are going to need. Because I just think she knows what we've gone through and what is probably things that need to be addressed. And I think in a sense, she's probably followed us a little better in that sense that she just seemed to... And she brought up a lot of things like listening, patience. Patience is true. Patience is going to be one thing. This is not going to be solved within a week or two. It's going to be a long process for a year. And, you know, they both, in a sense, maybe her a little more, was setting up the next person. And, but patience and listening and teamwork and a plus for both of them. They've worked with the union a lot. Just some of the things she mentioned, and maybe it's not important, but the birthday greeting says staff. It's like, and being inclusive and recognizing people, students, staff, teachers.
Expressing gratitude.
And trying to create a positive culture. And I know that's an abstract word, culture. But, but this is not the easiest decision to make. Because, you know, sometimes it's like, okay, you've got three people or four people and one of them is definitely a clear cut. But you've got two people who are very good and have done some things in other districts that have helped them out a lot. And I also feel she's very knowledgeable, like you said, the 90 hours. I had heard that, but I wasn't quite sure how that broke down, but she explained it to us. Time on learning. So, I did have a chance to speak to a couple of people who spoke very highly of her. One was the, who reached out to me was the school committee chair in East Hampton. And they wish they could have figured out a way to keep her, but they couldn't because of the interim idea. Her license, I believe, now goes to 28, so that got renewed so that she doesn't have a problem with needing a waiver or temporary because she's retired. Neither one of them do. Their licenses go out a few years. So that is not a problem. And so, anybody else?
All right. Thoughts before we move on to the other person?
On to Mr. Wood.
On to Mr. Wood. All right. I found him to be really personable. Just like, listening to him speak, I felt like he was thoughtful. And he, you know, answered the questions directly. He didn't dance around anything. Again, I feel like he's a pretty pragmatic person. Like he understands, he understands what makes sense and what doesn't. And I feel like he's the kind of person that gravitates toward what makes sense, which I always enjoy. He's been a director of special education. I did like when he said, "We need to be honest with ourselves about our deficits."
Yeah, and then he brought up...
And kind of holding up a mirror to ourselves.
The buck stops with him. He was willing to accept that responsibility and take ownership of it.
I was a little disappointed with no experience with NIASC. I just, with all his experience, that he sort of, probably because of the schools he was in, he oversaw it, but he never did the direct work.
Yeah, he's never been, he's never been a high school principal, so he never had to do the paperwork. He just made, he just had to make sure the paperwork was done.
He also said he was on the NIASC side.
Yes.
I did like that, that he's been on the visiting team, so he knows what's on the other side of it. I did like that.
I like the fact that, it's funny, you say more, he's pragmatic. I think that he definitely had, he was more, he adjusted questions and there was no prob, had no problem understanding. And he's very articulate and he was very focused. He did seem to have a special understanding about culture. And he kind of almost read the issues, I felt. He didn't say a whole lot more than what we asked him to, which I thought was good. I think he has a very good presentation. I mean, especially coming in as the last candidate, kind of, he was able to kind of, you know, command attention, at least mine. I know he has good financial acumen. He works for the management solution. And he also seemed to be pretty confident with his budget negotiation as well as, you know, getting stakeholder buy-in. He seemed to be really, really good at that. I think both candidates were very well experienced. I know Maureen had, like, I think she said she's going her 50th year. So, to me, those are the things that stood out the most was how they engaged us, kind of envisioning how they would work with, you know, the community. He seemed to be, have a good understanding of integrating folks and bringing about, you know, a type of healing or a type of, I don't know if that's the word to use, but he definitely seemed to be a very strong people person. And I think, I think we need that. Well, yeah, they're, that's why I asked if you could put two names. They were definitely on my list.
He works for Andy.
Yeah.
Like Andy is listed as his supervisor.
Well, we've been in that situation before.
Is it implied that he no longer does that?
No, that's, that's where Chris was at. Chris was in the same situation for his...
No, like, is it, is it understood that he would no longer do that job? That he would only do this job?
He only could do this job. Yes.
And does he know that?
Good question.
Oh, yeah.
I would assume, I shouldn't say I would assume. It would be difficult to do both jobs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Because we expect him to be here 24/7. Not necessarily 24/7, but, you know, it's not a part-time job.
No.
It's not. I come in, I'll work where in the morning and then go with Andy in the afternoon.
I guess that would be my only reservation then, is that, like you said, this is not a part-time gig.
Yeah, I would think that he would have to, but, you know, certainly if he's a part-time consultant, then...
He is there presently.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. Um, yeah, he's still there. So, that would, if we went that route, would definitely have to be a condition for employment is he would have to leave there.
Okay.
Where Maureen is already free and available from the last district she was at. She was at East Hampton.
I mean, I don't see that as a huge hurdle, that's just...
Yeah, I think it would just be a simple question.
Yeah.
Says it's okay to contact his employer, so...
Yeah, apparently Andy likes him because it says you can contact him. Uh, okay, what are...
I feel like we, I feel like we could all be unanimous on Mr. Wood. I'm just throwing that out there.
I don't really have anything negative to say about him other than we need to make sure that he understands that this is the only job he can have.
I do share your concern with that.
Because I know that, I know that consulting...
We're trying to avoid a conflict of interest, we're trying to avoid...
I believe there is some language in the superintendent's contracts that allow them part-time employment, speaking engagements, things like that.
But does working for a consultant equal a speaking engagement?
But I'm not sure if that is exclusive of, you know, like, I'm not sure what...
Can we call him and ask? Like, hello?
Yeah, are we allowed to limit that?
We could just ask, was he plan, like, should he get the job? Was he planning on leaving the management, blah, blah, blah? Is that allowed?
I'd say that's bordering on the line of...
Well, there's a way to word it, I would dare say.
Okay, well, word it however you need to word it. But like, I could definitely, I could definitely vote him in if that is not on the table.
Well, we could vote contingency on that, can't we? Or you want to just...
I'm going to do this outside only because
I think that's a great idea.
It's private. And I need to give myself a minute to figure out how I want to word this.
You go, you go do that.
So, we will take a break. He presently is employed and does not see it as a problem. Would have to talk to Andy about the disengagement.
Does not see it as a problem as for him to stay on? Or doesn't see it as a problem for him to dissolve and leave?
No, for him to leave.
Did he understand why we were asking?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I don't know if there's any more conversation. I, I'll just come out and say it. At this point, I would feel more comfortable with Maureen in the sense that, you know, they're both agree, both. And I just am a little nervous with the circumstances of the, and whether it's valid or not of the other employer. So, it's not like it's a clear cut. We're not working for someone right now and we can transition over. There's not a definite yes or no. But that's my opinion. I'm throwing that on the table. So, discussion?
When the salary was published?
Oh, there was 140 to 150. That would have to be negotiated.
Well, I just want to make sure they knew what they were getting into.
Yes, that, they know what our range is and what's out there, was posted. And that was based off the previous salary. And so, yeah, they know, they know what the range is. This is no, I'm going to come back at 200,000. And...
Okay.
It's, they know what the range is. They know front. Not a number has been established, but that's the range.
So, you were leaning toward Benanda?
Yes.
She was my first choice as well.
She was my first choice on paper, I've got to say. Like, she was one of the first resumes that I printed off. Like, I looked through her letters of recommendation. I too made a couple of phone calls and emails. And her experience is unrivaled. Her knowledge is deep. She has, she has direct experience in the things we need direct experience in right now, which is the state reviews. She's very knowledgeable in sped. She has been through the NIASC three times.
Like hands-on?
Hands-on. Her answers were great, but they were all prepped, which I couldn't decide was good or bad.
She got the questions. She was the only one that...
She watched the meeting, she got the, she got the questions, she prepared herself.
It's in a sense, that's like, she did some research and she did the questions.
And I have...
Could someone say it was a little long-winded sometimes, maybe? But she did take the initiative, get the questions, and she did prepare.
But that made Michael come off as more approachable and more charismatic and more, I don't know.
Adaptable?
Yeah. I mean, every follow-up question I fired at Benanda, she was able to answer directly. And so like, that's what, that's kind of why I asked a lot of follow-up questions to her, to make sure she could actually answer the questions without reading it off a piece of paper. And like I said, her knowledge is obviously deep, her experience is unrivaled. So, I guess it kind of comes down to experience versus a little more charismatic, I suppose.
I want to be careful how I say this. And I don't mean any disrespect or insulting anybody. But didn't we just lose charismatic?
No, I don't think we lost charismatic. No. I, that is one of the last words I would use to describe what we just lost.
But...
I mean...
Someone who interviewed well.
Someone thought he was charismatic, but it wasn't me.
Someone who interviewed well. And I think that's what I'm saying. Someone who interviewed well.
He's also good on paper, too.
Yes. So...
In the end, in the end, you don't, you don't really know. I mean, these are just...
Correct. I'm just throwing it out there.
And if you read their letters of recommendation, like, both of them have very similar words. Words like, you know, served with pride, integrity, community leadership. You know, there's, their, their letters of recommendation really speak to what we're looking for. "Fostering a supportive and collaborative school environment with all involved. She's strict but fair. Identifies barriers to learning and works tirelessly to make sure every student has the same opportunity." And then his all say the same thing. Like, people that have worked with him, they talk about what a problem solver he is. He has, they do talk about his financial acumen, about how he's, you know, very good with budgets and numbers. I did like when he said, what did he say? He said something about every number on this sheet is actually a person or something like that? What did he say? Hold on. Uh, he said it's more of a policy document than a numbers document. And he likes to figure out what the numbers on the page do for our students. I really liked when he said that. Where are you at, Mike?
I'm torn. I'm really torn.
It is a tough decision.
It's a very tough decision.
And it's important.
Yes. Aaron?
Are we allowed to ask people, or is that not allowed?
Brainy nodding?
Yeah, I would like to know what, like Pam and, um, oh my gosh, your name just fell out of my head. Kim, I think, as principals, I feel like their input is important. They were here. Pam is still there, she moved. Um, is that appropriate or no?
I think Mr. Wood would want that, quite frankly.
Well, I think either of them would.
We can, um, give him a mic. If, if they, they want to say something, uh, we can, we're in discussion. It's not like we're doing interviews.
Here, come here.
You would have to... Do you want to sit there if, if you just to make, be comfortable?
She's on camera, she sits next to Aaron, or whatever.
So...
Yeah, here, just, that's, yeah.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's all right.
If you don't feel comfortable, then please, not a big deal.
I think, can...
But, but we do value your opinion and we do respect your opinion.
I appreciate that. So, we struggled with the same things, pretty much what everyone has just said. But Kim and I specifically felt like there was a greater pull towards number... Towards number four. But I think a big turnoff for Maureen was just the reading from the notes, which just threw us off. It wasn't like a conversation. But I don't, I don't have any doubt she knew that information. I think it just really, I don't know. At her level, it kind of threw me off that, Kim and I, that she read, like, even her feelings on things or like how she would, because it's very smart to go back and look up what questions will be asked. That was really great of her. But I wish I could have seen more of it through, just kind of like how he was very charismatic and just easy to talk to. We felt that, too. So, I think we were leaning more towards number four. Um, but all the things you guys said are true. I think they're both great candidates, so...
I wish it wasn't as hard.
What's that?
I wish it wasn't as hard for those.
I know. It'd be easier if it wasn't.
I felt, I felt, uh, that was why I was calling his presentation. Uh, I think, you know, we have a community that needs a leader that, that's approachable and that can be engaged. I think that's another question. How do you feel like on approachability scale? And, you know, they, they both talked about building trust. Um, I just felt like right off the bat, like I just wanted to hear more of what, what he had to say and get it through. I just felt very like, uh, you know, he had a lot of wisdom going on there, and he, and he was listening. He wasn't just throwing words at us or buzzwords. He actually deviated on a few things and said, you know, "It's not going to be easy." You know, and he said that his approach isn't going to be any different, whether it's interim or not. I thought that was, that was unique. Everybody else there had a different approach, so...
Yeah.
To me, I, I would make sense of what would be different about it. Except that you know you're going to hand it off. I mean, you're not going to make that many significant changes in one year.
Right.
So, I just felt like he just was a little bit more, um, pragmatic, down-to-earth, authentic. I don't know what the word is, but I just felt like he, he knew what he had to do. And, um, you know, he was going to get it, you know, done. That was just the vibe I got from him, but...
Yeah. I think, yeah, I think that's what we got, too. More authentic.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Do you want to say anything else?
No.
Kim, want to come forward? No? Okay.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you again.
He gave me a new one. I'm all set. But I think Stan's heart dropped when I picked up that microphone and gave it to somebody else. All right, so I guess my only hang-up is the employment thing. I guess that's kind of where I am. So, if, if from your conversation you found it iffy...
Well, I, I, um...
Well, it's eleven o'clock at night, I think, right?
Everybody's iffy right now.
Everybody's iffy right now, yeah.
So, that being said, do we want to make this decision tonight?
We definitely want to make this decision. We didn't do all this to not come out with something, with something here.
Okay. No, I agree.
All right. I'm going to make a motion. Hold on to your hats, everyone. Uh, I am going to move that we employ, elect...
Extend an offer.
Extend an offer to Michael Wood as our interim superintendent for this coming school year.
Do we have a second?
Second, yeah.
All in favor? Any more discussion? We're good? All in favor? Aaron?
Aye.
Aye. Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
Of course. The only thing I want to qualify is, we need to do the, um, the fingerprints, the query checks, and all that stuff to make sure that comes back.
Yep.
And, um, so it would be pending, um, that all the licenses and all that stuff comes back, is verified, and that we've done our due diligence on that.
And that this is his only job.
And this is his only job. So, what I will do is, uh, call him on the way home. Now, do we want to set a timeline that we need to have an answer back from him?
Yes, because if he doesn't want it, we need to know.
We have to get back to Andy, so he's got to know.
Correct. So, why don't we say Monday?
Today's Thursday?
Let's get back to us by Monday.
Monday, I think that's fair.
Because then we'll need to...
They'll give him a chance to do it tomorrow, maybe, or, uh, and, um, to, um, then, um, get back to us, which he can through email, and that's how we'll communicate.
Right.
Uh, and, um, um, so that we can then move on to the next piece, which is number four. I'll make it quick. We have to appoint an individual or have a subcommittee to negotiate a contract for this selected interim superintendent. Now, Adam's thought was that, I'll just throw it out there so we can get going, to have me appointed to work with him. It's, and it's, it's under the understanding, I mean, this is not just, I do it and sign it and that. It comes back, once we have an agreement between him and us, it will come back to a full committee to be voted on. And that is the only way he becomes the superintendent, is if we vote yes on a contract that's been negotiated.
I like all of that.
All right, but we have to vote.
So, I'll make a motion to appoint you, Ryan, the contact person for the contract negotiations.
Second.
All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, that being said? All right, make a motion to adjourn at eleven oh one PM.
Second.
All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
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 We're done. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
We did it.
We did it.
And I will reach out to him probably on the way home and let him know what's going on and, um...